Okay, okay, let's call the presentation portion to order. Looks like it's a short agenda tonight. First item, we're gonna call the public hearing for the rezoning of property located at 1505 Oak Ridge Highway, Clinton, Tennessee 37716. That's parcel seven, Anderson County Tax Map 88C, Group A. Now, for the public hearing portion, anyone who wants to speak on this, for or against, is welcome to come up to the microphone, state your name or address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Commission won't take action during the public hearing. That'll happen during the report in the regular meeting. So if anyone would like to speak on the rezoning of 1505 Oak Ridge Highway, please come to the microphone. Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Carol Cook. My name is Carol Cook. I am here representing my brother Clyde Cook. Clyde had an accident. He broke his neck in three different places, and he's in rehab. Fortunately, he is beginning to try to walk again, and we are asking for the rezoning for future development on this property. The rezoning will provide revenue for such facilities as a restaurant, convenience store, numerous different businesses that could go there. And I think it would be an opportunity for improvement for the community and for also revenue for Anderson County. It would also provide security for my brother. And that's what we're asking is for it to be rezoned for commercial, for his security and well-being, which is pursuit of happiness.
Thank you, ma'am. And what is your address, just for the record?
1505 Oak Ridge Highway.
That's your address also, okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, my address at home?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, 1147 Hillville Road, Andersonville.
Thank you.
Is there any questions or anything that I can answer for you? Yes. Clyde Cook. Yes, and if any of you all are hunters or gunmen, you may know him. He owned the gun doctor. He was the owner and the gunsmith there.
Thank you. Danny, is there anything you wanted to add? This has already been recommended by the Planning Commission and everything?
Yeah, there's nothing to add other than all the legal requirements for public notification have been met. The Planning Commission has given a recommendation for it. Property's been posted. All of that has been met.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the audience want to speak on this? Any commissioners?
My name is Marcus Denton, and I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, who can't be here, who lives at 204 Gibbs Ferry Road. She wasn't speaking for or against, but had a number of concerns she wanted to make sure were addressed, perhaps even answered. But she was concerned about tax assessment values of the properties around, also the property value itself. She was concerned about water drainage in the area, particularly her neighbor has a lower property, and also the traffic in the area, which is already bad at times. She had some concern that that could get worse, so just wanted to present those items as concerns on her behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Ely. I live at, my wife and I live at 112 Gibbs Ferry Road in Clinton. Our property is adjacent to the property in question, Mr. Cooks. They've been great neighbors. I guess the first thing I would like to ask, does the commission have any information whatsoever as to what can potentially be placed here? Or does the Planning Development Office have any idea what could be potentially placed?
Danny can answer that.
I'm sorry.
Well, there's been, excuse me, there's been no mention of a particular business that I'm aware of that could be proposed to go there. There's no particular one being mentioned. You know, but the thing to keep in mind, even if the property's rezoned, this really isn't the last line, because when you do a commercial project in the county, there's nothing done without a site plan that, you know, goes before a planning, it goes before a planning commission. And of course, our zoning resolution, you know, it addresses light pollution, noise pollution, drainage requirements. You know, a drainage plan would have to be submitted with calculations given by an engineer, all of that type of stuff. And we're not necessarily here to say yea or nay. It's not our position. Our position's to get it here, and this board decide. But when it comes to those factors, there are other things in place to address them.
Thank you, Danny. He kind of stole a little bit of my thunder, but nonetheless, I'm gonna go ahead and list some of my concerns, and likewise for my wife. We're concerned about the potential for devaluation of our property. That would be perhaps number one. As the gentleman previously mentioned, we're concerned about, as you know, the highway is heavily trafficked. We're concerned about additional traffic ingress and egress onto a property that is surrounded by residential, not business. That's a real concern. I have a personal concern for my family's safety and security with the increased business visitation, people walking up and down in front of the highway and then additional traffic exactly adjoins our property. It's a big concern. Danny mentioned, he briefly mentioned about the allowable noise levels per the commission or the planning development, you're allowed to have an increase in the decibels of noise that have to be measured before and afterwards, but that's a concern. It's gonna be louder. And for what it's worth, our bedroom's on the second floor overlooking the property. Absolute concern. An increase in light levels, which is allowed, it's gonna be, there are gonna be more light. Trash and debris, you can't drive down that highway and not be embarrassed by all the trash that's on that highway. And I'm just concerned that there could be additional trash and debris from people stopping at a convenience store that sells gasoline or whatever it may be. We don't need more trash. We need to pick up what trash that we have on the side of the road. I'm also likewise concerned about, that was mentioned, the subservice runoff of water and petroleum products onto my property, creating additional ponding and environmental insults and environmental concerns, especially in light of you talking about TVA's environmental concerns. That's a potential concern for me, if we have oil and petroleum runoff under my property. And so, to summarize, this is not my only list, the complete list, but it's enough of a list. I've gotten three, I've given three minutes, and in summary, these and other potentials should preclude passage of this spot zoning, and I respectfully request you to vote no, though I recognize that the family also has a concern here, and that's why it's before the board. So, thank you very much for listening to me. I appreciate it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak?
My name is Kim Lee. I live at 109 Circle Drive. I agree completely with their statement. We live across the highway. They've been great neighbors, never had a problem. But I moved into a neighborhood. I didn't move into a commercial residency. It is important for me for my children to be safe. I want to know what is coming there before. I say, yeah, great. I hope the best for your brother. I'm so sorry that he had an accident, but I want a good neighborhood for my kids to live in. It echoes in that area, so if there is a lot of traffic in that area, I'm going to hear it in my bedroom. I can hear neighbors talking sometimes, depending on where they are in their yard. If I can hear that, I know I'm gonna hear cars going in and out all night long. I'm gonna see the lights reflecting in my bedroom window. You know, I, I don't know what else to say, other than I don't think it's a great idea for where it's at. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on? Okay, this concludes the public hearing. And we don't have any, no courtesy resolutions tonight, so this concludes the presentation portion of the commission being.
We'll have our regular meeting here in about three or four minutes, and then that issue will come back up, and we'll discuss it under his report. Just wanted to let you know the public hearing is now over. All right, let's get the regular meeting for the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, February 18th, 2020, started. I'd like to thank Vice Chairman Anderson for getting me back on schedule. Appreciate that. All right, so we'll first start, oh, I've been requested, if you wouldn't mind, to please remove your hat inside the courthouse. No disrespect, but we appreciate it. So, silence your phones if you haven't done so. We're gonna, everybody's clocked in here. Commissioner Scott may be joining us later. She's on her way back from a travel. And we're gonna have the prayer led to us, to us tonight by Commissioner Creasy, and then we'll have our pledge led by Vice Chairman Anderson. Commissioner Creasy, sir, would you like to lead us in prayer?
Almighty God, lay your hand of love and peace upon the body gathered here tonight. Bless us with your wisdom and guidance, that we may conform to the teachings of your holy Son. Enable us to make decisions that are equitable, compassionate, and supportive of all people. Strengthen us to choose the best path for our county rather than the easy path. In His holy name, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
(Inaudible). United States of America, and a good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's gonna have it, I think. Thank you, Commissioner Creasy and Vice Chairman Anderson. Nice prayer, sir. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Fritz?
Chairman, this past week, we had an officer that passed away on duty. Could we have a moment of silence for him and his family?
Absolutely. Would you like to raise a moment of silence? Would you mention his name? Robert Ryan. A moment of silence for in honor of Officer Ryan and his family and friends. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz.
Chairman, if I may speak on that?
Yes, sir. Commissioner what?
I went to the funeral, and the most respectful thing I think I've seen in a long time was the changing of the guards of the deputies down there. They stood at attention at each end of the coffin, and when they marched down the aisle to, it was, it was very impressive of the way they respected their fellow deputy. Very respectful. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that feedback. Okay, next, we'll have appearance of citizens. If there's any item that's not on the agenda, and you would like to discuss and bring before our attention, you may come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and whatever's on your mind. You have three minutes. Is there anyone that has anything that's not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Joel Hamilton. I've been a resident of Anderson County for about 12 years. Moved here from Atlanta, hit a wait in the traffic.
I have a feeling this is gonna be something on traffic?
Could be. The operative word around here is clear. That could be dangerous, you know. Anyway, I live over Brookstone Ridge, which is south of the new convenience center on 441, and I was, had a little residence about it going in. I'm saying, oh my goodness, there goes the neighborhood, you know. But you guys did a great job. I want to compliment the commission and the layout of it. It was a lot better than I had anticipated. Needless to say, my wife and I have traveled that road for 12 years, many trips to Walmart. And what I noticed the other day, I got a little apprehensive, because as always, going north, they accessed the entrance to that thing by coming over into the shoulder. So the northbound lane has to curve to the right and not go straight. Well, it was raining, and there is no stop sign for the people coming out of the convenience center. So the van had pulled out into the shoulder, and there was somebody making a left-hand turn, and I said, oh my goodness, I'm threading a needle between these two cars. I only bring this up because normally, there's not a lot of traffic there, but there's an accident waiting to be, waiting to happen. I brought attention to the, in Georgia, I brought attention to my daughter almost lost her life in another intersection. I went to the state traffic board to say, we need a stoplight there. Took them two years and I don't know how many accidents before they put a stoplight, where my daughter almost lost her life. So I'm down here to just say, commissions, if you can do anything, at least put a stop sign when they come out of there, so the people know where to stop, and they don't pull into the, to the oncoming traffic. And in inclement weather, I really felt like I was trying to thread a needle there. So I'm trying to be proactive here rather than reactive. So that's, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Really appreciate it. Commissioner Yeager has a question.
I think I understand what you're saying, but there's no stop sign coming out of the convenience center? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, there's no, there's no white line where the traffic, and see what the thing is, when they, when they curved over, they actually curved over to take up some of the shoulder. And so the traffic has to curve over on the shoulder to keep going straight.
Okay, I got you.
And so those people coming out, they don't know where, really where to stop. And if you have somebody trying to take, take a left turn, and somebody coming out, you got a, you got an eye there. So at least they should come out, put a stop sign, and then put a line, so these people coming out of the convenience center know where to stop.
I follow you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions? Mr. Hamilton, I'm sure that Gary Long wrote superintendent will address that issue pronto. I'm pretty confident.
Well, like I said, when I was in Georgia, I went and cleared the top board, and it's on a highway, and he says, we do not put a stop sign on the highway, because it creates more rear-end accidents. I can understand that. But two years later, where my daughter almost lost her life, they had a stoplight there. And I don't know how many accidents they had. And when my daughter had her accident, the nurse was the first on the scene. She already told me, she said, Mr. Hamilton, I don't know how many times I've been out here because of an accident already at that intersection. This is not nearly that bad. Remember, the operative word here is clear, right? But it's an accident in inclement weather that I think, I'm just trying to be proactive, that's all.
Thank you for bringing our attention. We appreciate it. Any other citizens? Okay, we'll move on to approval and correction of agenda. First, the consent agenda. Have a motion by Commissioner, have a motion by Commissioner Fritz to pass. Thank you, Chris Fritz, you knew what I was looking for. Denenberg. All right, so we got a motion by Denenberg, seconded by, come on Fritz, help me out here. Thank you, sir. All right, we got a question. Commissioner Creasy, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to have the ADA committee taken off of the consent agenda and moved to our regular agenda.
And what item would you like to put it under, sir?
Well, I think there may be a place, we'll see.
Under committee reports and boards?
Yeah.
Or do you want to move it up quicker? Is Louise still here? I don't want her waiting all night.
She had to go to an art center board meeting.
Okay, all right, so you're okay to put it under the committees and boards?
Yeah.
Okay. Number, you want to put it up? Okay, under six, let's go under finance, ADA, okay. Got a motion to move the ADA, you got a second? Any discussion on that? All in favor of moving the ADA report from consent agenda to the regular agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other items on the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, back to the original motion. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda with the amended change, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, the regular agenda. Motion by Commissioner McCamey, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I've got two hot button items that are under the operations committee report, but I think the majority of the people that are in house are prepared for. I'd like to move that up under number five, make it five A. That's agreeable.
The whole committee report or that item?
I think just move the whole committee report. We're always last anyways. Let us be first once, once in a while.
Okay, so under five A, we would move the operations committee report. That's the motion. Do I have a second by Fritz, and then a question by Creasy? Commissioner Creasy, did you have a question on that?
Yes, I'd like to add something to the regular agenda.
Okay, we're gonna take action on this item first, and then we'll come back to that. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion to move the operation committee report to five A? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we add to the agenda, Resolution 20-02-806, a resolution declaring support of our many freedoms and rights contained in the United States Constitution and all subsequent amendments.
Have a motion and a second to add Resolution number 20-02-806.
That would be under the operations, I believe.
Have it under the operations to be added. Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other items to the agenda that needs to be addressed? Mayor Frank?
If, Mr. Chairman, if you'd be willing to add under the mayor's report, as you know, we have an agreement that was executed back in 2012 with the city of Clinton, that once we moved Glen Alpine, that we were committed to either selling that at a public auction or sealed bid process through the purchasing office. And I know we have that agreement. I would like to get a motion to declare that property surplus, so that I could go ahead and set a date. And then I would also like some input from you on some proposed dates. I have some dates to share with you, if you'd be willing to add that to the agenda.
So we'd like to have that under your report, of course.
If that's, if that's acceptable, or I always stay till the end, so if you want it at the end.
We have a motion to add, what is that? Was that called the Glen Alpine? It was, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so to add the Glen Alpine sale or surplus of property under the mayor's report. We have a motion and a second. Is that what this is?
Yes, it is.
Okay, any discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Gotta write it down, or I'll forget. I'll get in trouble. Okay. Any other items to the agenda to change or add? All right, here are none, we'll move on. Next, oh, sorry, yes, I missed a vote on that. Man, look at this parliamentarian.
Yes, sir.
And you said you didn't even want to be a parliamentarian. Fire here. We'll take a vote on that last motion that the mayor brought up for the Glen Alpine. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now I guess we need to get a... Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, I guess we need to get a... I'll just slide this on over to you.
We'd like to.
You're here on fire tonight. I wouldn't mind taking one. All in favor with...
He's just a navigator. You're driving.
All in favor of the regular agenda as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate it. Oh, thank you, sir. All right. Public hearing report, Vice Chairman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a public hearing at 6:15 to consider rezoning the property located at 1505 Oak Ridge Highway, Clinton, Tennessee, 37716, from R1 to C1. Heard from a relative of the property owner, as well as several of the adjacent neighbors. And I guess we need a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Mead, sir, to approve?
Yes.
Is there a second? Motion dies lack of a second? I guess the item fails. Is that right? Lack of a second?
That's correct.
So no action has been taken on that. Commissioner Meredith, sorry, sir.
Oh, I was just going to suggest we send it back to planning commission, Mr. Chairman. My sole move.
Got a motion to move back to planning commission. We have a second. Any discussion on that motion?
May I say so?
Let us vote on the motion. Well, go ahead. Come on up. Come on up. You should have the right to say. Yes.
You know, I think it would be unconstitutional to turn my brother down. According to the Constitution, he has a right to pursue happiness. And this is going to make him financially secure for his recovery. So I think... I hope you all will consider that, that it is his constitutional right.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, if the motion had have been seconded, I was going to defer the motion until next month. I haven't seen the property. And if I remember correctly, it's residential, and it's surrounded by residential, if I'm not mistaken. And I would like to have seen it before I voted, and I hadn't had a chance to go out and look at it. But I think we did the right thing. We're sending it back, and we all get another chance to look, now that we know we have residents that oppose it.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. All right, so the motion is moved back to planning commission, was it? Or zoning? Planning commission. Any other discussion?
Maybe you might get a map or something, too.
And encourage everybody to come and make comments.
It's in the package.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does that complete your report?
That completes the report.
Man, that's probably the quickest report you've had. Thank you. When would that next meeting be?
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday in March is when that meeting will take place. Okay, next is the operations committee report. Commissioner Chairman Isabel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to talk about, we had a presentation on elder abuse by Melissa Miller, Detective Wendy Skwoski. And it was an excellent presentation. If anybody gets the opportunity, they can do that on our channel, 95 ACT TV, or it was actually showed on Channel 12 on the operations committee, that they play that over on Channel 95. Anyway, first is Mayor Frank. Upon motion made by Commissioner Mead to approve resolution 20-02-801 in support of the Second Amendment, subject to the minor editing changes recommended by Law Director, Commissioner McCamey seconded a motion. Motion passes, amended forward full commission for approval.
Have a motion to approve, Commissioner Mead?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I was second. Should have been.
Seconded by Commissioner Isabel. Commissioner Denenberg?
Sorry, I thought it was seconded in the motion.
It's okay. Any questions on... Motion to amend. Creasy, look at you. A man. Yes, sir.
Well, yeah, I'd like to substitute the resolution 20-02-806 in the place of that resolution.
Now we get to see how the parliamentarian works. Mr. Parliamentarian?
Hey, Jay, walk forward, would you?
Right now, there's no such thing.
Yeah, I think we have. Yeah, we have. We have a motion and a second.
I think he's...
The original motion, not the...
Sir, you have a motion and a second to approve?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can I take action on that? You can't just substitute one for the other. Now, what you can do is, you've got two options. Vote on this one. If this one doesn't pass, have Commissioner Creasy introduce his. If this one passes, Commissioner Creasy still has the option of introducing his, but it won't be... It'll be an addition, not a substitution. But this motion needs to be acted on first, the way this guy done. Motion to approve and a second.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for clarification.
Oh, sorry. This is not working, but I'd like to speak... I'd like to speak to this.
Go ahead, Commissioner Smallridge. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I have a couple of concerns about supporting this resolution that I feel I need to express. And I should say, I've heard from a lot of others who feel the same way, and some who differ. But I've had as much input on this resolution from my district as I've heard on much of anything that we've discussed here. I think the concern... It's a concern about what is the real intent of this resolution. Is it supporting opposition to any kind of a reasonable requirement relative to gun ownership and gun safety? And I guess I'm looking for some reassurance here. For example, I know that at least a couple of Tennessee counties that have passed similar resolutions also have statements about opposition to red flag laws. In general, as you know, and I think most of us know, red flag laws permit a family member or police officer to petition a state court based on the actions or the statements of the individual. They have the option of petitioning the state court to temporarily remove guns from that person. I think that's a very important chance to take away guns from a person who may not be emotionally or mentally stable at the time. And I think the family member is, and many times, the best person to know whether that's the case or not. So if in any way, this resolution was expressing an intent to oppose red flag laws, I could not support it. You know, I've been around guns all my life, culture. My first handgun permit was issued in 1957 from New York State. I have a carry permit now. I think I understand guns, and I also understand the need to have some reasonable safety precautions to protect the people, to protect the children. And I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing here. And I would like it... Can I... I would like to propose an amendment to the resolution.
I think we've already... Well...
Am I allowed to amend the resolution?
Oh, you're... What was your motion? I was just substitution. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine. I'm just asking for my own edification. You're fine. You can certainly make a proposal for an amendment. Go ahead, Commissioner Smallridge.
My amendment would, I guess, come under... Would come under the area, whereas seven and eight in the current motion, or the current resolution. But I would like to submit, and I think this would put a lot of people's minds at ease, that we're not talking about opposing any kind of a reasonable restriction or requirement on gun ownership. But my amendment would read, whereas the members of the Anderson County Board of the Commission are united in their belief that support for the Second Amendment goes hand in hand with keeping guns out of the hands of criminals and those who represent a danger to themselves and others. And then go on... It would go on to the other wherethes. So that's my amendment.
We have an amendment. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the proposed amendment? All in favor of the proposal, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's go to the board on the amendment. Can you do that, Brian?
I'll have to clear the request to amend the amendment.
What's... What's that?
I didn't want to speak. All right, so we come in.
Well, that was on the original motion. We'll come back to that. No one asked to speak on the amendment, but we'll come back to the original motion after this vote.
Isn't there a chance to speak on the amendment?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
That's what all those yellow lights were a pair of minutes ago.
Well, I just asked if there was any questions, and nobody spoke up. Did I not ask that question?
We hit our button, which is...
Yeah, it wasn't tied into the amendment, so... But yes, we'll speak on it. Clear the board, and let's make it to where people can ask questions on the amendment. Go ahead and mark Smallridge as the motioner for the amendment. You don't have a mechanism for an amendment on this thing. That's the problem.
Who was...
Smallridge and Jamison seconded it. And again, this is the amendment only to the original motion that Commissioner Mead made. All right, so questions, Commissioner Creasy? And feel free to hit your button for questions on the amendment. Chris?
I think there was some folks that wanted to be ahead of me, but...
We'll come back to it.
Okay.
Mead's not working.
I have the highest respect for Dr. Smallridge, and I'm going to vote to support his amendment, but I'm going to vote to oppose the amended motion if the amendment passes, but not... I'm not voting against my fellow Commissioner Smallridge.
Understood.
I have a lot of respect for him.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner Mead, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, what I want to bring up is that there's lots of limitations on the Second Amendment. It's been passed throughout the country, and there's a lot of things that are being looked at. But my position on this is that it's the U.S. Supreme Court that makes the final decision on what's a reasonable impingement on any of our rights. And I think that's where I draw the line. If the Supreme Court makes a ruling in direction to other, then I think we're duty-bound to support that. We may have personal feelings that are otherwise. There are a number of things that the U.S. Supreme Court has ruled on that I didn't completely agree with them. Okay? But I will support that that is the law of the land, and that is the constitutional answer to these things. Our courts resolve what is reasonable. To try to bring in a specific issue into this item, which is general about the support of Second Amendment, I think is unwarranted and not wise at this point. We're just saying we believe in the Second Amendment, and I think that automatically goes to say, as interpreted by the courts, and the courts are right now in the process of deciding how they're going to... what they're going to do on that. I think a lot of the discussion about the red flag laws is whether or not there's due process. There are some that have no due process at all. There are others that are pretty good, and I think would get general support, but those have not been... have not come to the top of the court's decision-making requirements yet. So I'd be... I would be opposed to the motion to amend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Denenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to be sure that we're talking about the same resolution, 2002-801, correct?
Correct.
Having listened to all of the citizens who have taken the time to come to our meetings and to voice your opinions, I want to thank you. And I want to thank those who have contacted me directly. I want to thank you for exercising your First Amendment right to freedom of speech. However, there are some that I do not agree with. When the people came to the operations meeting and voiced their desire for us to deem Anderson County a sanctuary county, I believe I heard that they were asking that this county commission would condone our law enforcement officers in defying the law. I could never support such a thing, ever. As Mr. Mead said, there are things with the laws that I don't agree with as well, but it's not my decision to make. It's the decision of the United States Supreme Court. We took an oath of office to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Tennessee, and that's what we will do. So if this is a resolution where we would be in any way asking our law enforcement officers to defy the law, I will never, ever vote for such a thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Commissioner Smallridge?
Yeah, I just want, in response to some of the comments, I just want to point out there is nothing specific in my amendment. It is very general, and I purposely left it very general. We're talking about continued support for the Second Amendment, but we said it goes hand in hand with keeping guns out of the hands of criminals and those who represent a danger to themselves and others. That's very general. It's... I think it's consistent with the rest of the main motion, or the main resolution. And again, I wanted to... And I purposely left it as very general, just like all the other wherethes in this resolution are very general.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Any other discussion on the amendment? I was going to call you Commissioner... Mayor Frank, I apologize.
I'm sorry. If Commissioner Smallridge could repeat that language one more time. And the only reason I'm asking is, I mean, it could be maybe improved just with another word about not being in conflict. The whole resolution is about not being in conflict, going against state and Second Amendment. So there actually is in there also language... Legislation was passed in 2015 that allows no public funds, personnel, or property of the state or its subdivisions to be allocated to enforce federal laws governing firearms where it would violate state laws. So that's already law in the state of Tennessee. So I just want to make sure the language you're putting isn't going to put us out there and make a statement that we would go against that state law. So that's why I was asking for a repeat, because it's hard. I'm better seeing it than I am hearing, so...
Okay, you want to...
Yes, if you don't mind.
My amendment said, whereas the members of the Anderson County Board of Commission are united in their belief that support for the Second Amendment goes hand in hand with keeping guns out of the hands of criminals and those who represent a danger to themselves and others. And would go on to the next whereas.
Well, and I think that gets, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think that gets that, and those who represent a danger to themselves, gets to the heart of some of the concerns. Who's making the decision that they're a danger to themselves? And so I know we're keeping it general, but I think that's the due process issue that we're talking about. So I know, for instance, in divorce cases, there is due process. You know, maybe there's some disagreement about what that due process is. Some folks don't believe that, you know, an automatic removal of the firearm from the home until they have a hearing is proper. But nevertheless, there is due process that's put in place. So I just want to make sure that we're not making a statement, and maybe it's those last words that I think might be in conflict with that. I mean, does anyone else see that? So I mean, if you're saying...
Well, I mean...
If you look at who's the decision-maker, then, when we say, and people that might be danger to themselves?
Who's the decision-maker now? That's what I look at. I mean...
Right.
Their same determination is going to be made, whether we accept this amendment or not. I mean, someone, somewhere, is making a decision to take a gun from somebody that might be a harm to our community themselves or what have you. I'm not here to debate if it's right or wrong. I'm just here to do my job as an elected official and uphold the Constitution to the best of my ability. I think personally, the Commissioner Creasy's motion to support all the... You know, the Constitution and amendments as is suffices. I mean, we all took that oath when we took oath of office. But I understand there's a need, apparently, for many in this county to have this Second Amendment sanctuary resolution, and it's important to those individuals. And so... So, you know, I think we're doing the right thing, and I think the Commissioner has made an amendment offer for us to consider, and I think now that everybody's made their comments, if there's no other comments, we should take action on it, vote it up or vote it down. But I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm only suggesting maybe in compliance with state and federal law.
Well, we can certainly send it back to committee and have that.
And that's, that would be good with me.
And have it looked at to where this can be debated more, but it's up to this body. I'm not going to be the one to make that decision. So we have an amendment on the floor unless the original maker of the motion would like to move it back to a committee and withdraw or make a different motion, and I'm not suggesting you do, Commissioner Mead. It'd be up to you as the original maker of the original motion for this. To allow.
My understanding, I'll go to your man here, but I believe that we need to vote whether or not this is up or down, and then we go back to the original motion.
Okay. I agree with you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on the amendment? We're voting only on the amendment right now that Commissioner Smallridge has presented. Does everybody understand it? Would you like it read one more time? Okay, let's go to the board. Yes is for the amendment, no is against the amendment, as presented.
Don't have my glasses on.
Eight, seven.
Eight, seven, so it does not pass.
Is that the case even with fifteen here?
Yes.
All right, so motion fails for the amendment. Now, back to the original motion. Clear the board, Brian. Back to the original motion.
What was the vote on that?
Eight, seven.
Eight, seven.
Has to be nine, majority.
Majority, the whole body, not just the president.
Even though we have one missing.
I couldn't get to my toes fast enough to count.
I trust your counting anytime. Commissioner Creasy, and then we're going to go back to the original motion, Commissioner Mead. Yes, sir?
Are we speaking on the original motion?
Let's pull it up. Commissioner Creasy was the original maker of the motion. Who was seconded? Who was?
Yeah, me, I'm sorry. I was the maker of the motion for the Second Amendment.
Who seconded it? Commissioner Isible, okay? All right, now we'll take questions. Commissioner Creasy on the original motion.
And I have a prepared statement that I wrote. I'm a little older than I used to be, and I do better prepared statements than I do off the cusp.
You're fine, Commissioner Creasy.
I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign, domestic, that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same, and that I will obey the orders of the President of the United States and the orders of the officers appointed over me according to the regulations of, you know, the Uniform Code of Military Justice, so help me God. When I and other commissioners on this board took this oath, we knew we were sworn and bound to defend it with our lives. Our freedoms have been paid with both the blood of our military men and women and our many other courageous men and women who had the courage to stand their ground for these principles and rights. Our country, our U.S. Constitution, and our freedoms have remained strong by those who raised the courage to take this oath to support and defend with their life if necessary. To me, many others, to me and many others who took this oath, the United States constitutional is, Constitution is all but sacred. I personally believe to focus on one single amendment to our Constitution over all others diminishes the respect and meaning of all those who paid with their sacrifice and those respected and honored founding fathers who crafted this monumental document. I respectfully ask that we not pass a resolution focusing on just one single amendment and just one single freedom, but pass one supporting all our freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Okay, we have the original motion, which is to support the, a resolution declaring support of the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America, Resolution Number 20-02-801. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Fritz, sir?
I'm not going to say anything on that. First of all, I'm not a Democrat and I'm not a Republican. So I run, matter of fact, they got, the election commission has got these programs out there to try to figure out what you are. And when they run the, put my name in there and they pull me off, it actually says I'm an independent. And so, but lo and behold, when the positions we run for are, is an independent position. We run for it by partisan positions, so, which means we're supposed to not let politics play in any way, because we represent everyone, regardless of what party you are. So it's sort of unique that these things tell me that I'm an independent. But right now, the statement I want to make you think is sort of odd, but I think this country right now is the most divided I have ever seen it since I turned eighteen and started voting. And a lot of the resolutions, some of the resolutions we're voting on tonight, I don't know why they're even coming about. I mean, we have no business even bringing it up and wasting our time. We've already spent, I don't know how many minutes bringing it up, and there's no need to. That's wasting our time with it. I mean, we don't have no say in that. We don't need to, we don't have no say in a lot of this stuff like that. And the only thing we're doing is causing division, not only on this commission, but in our county. So we're causing division in the county itself. And, which is, I think is uncalled for and unnecessary. And for the sake of unity and everything like that, I'm not voting for any of these resolutions, because I think it's time we come back together and start being together as one body. I mean, do I believe in people that should have guns? Yes. My father-in-law was a member of the NRA. So, but that's not the issue. I have a gun. I mean, I've got, matter of fact, I've probably got a couple of guns or so in my home, but but that's not the issue. My thing is the division that's going on. I mean, it's time to stop the division and doing things that we need to be doing. I mean, you're seeing a lot of the bills in Nashville right now coming on and people doing stuff that has no business, they don't even take it up. It's time for us to just do the things that we need to be doing and forget all this other junk that we don't even have to be wasting our time with. We're going to be spending almost an hour tonight or taking up this junk that we have no business even thinking about messing with. But so for that sake, and the sake of unity, I'm going to be voting no for all of these resolutions.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Mead.
I just reserve my right as the maker of the motion to speak last, so you can go ahead, Mr. Yeager. Thank you. I brought this up in operations, and I've, the word sanctuary, it means different things to different people, and I don't have, I'd like to be able to understand every word of a resolution I vote for. And I don't understand what the word sanctuary means. I got a lot of explanations and definitions, and I support the Second Amendment, but this sanctuary county item gives me pause here, and I don't want to vote for something I don't understand. So I appreciate my time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Commissioner Yeager. Commissioner Jamison. Commissioner Jamison's button's still not working, Brian. Go ahead, Commissioner Jamison.
Okay. I think the only thing we need to say in this is we support the Constitution and the twenty-seven amendments. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jamison. Any other comments on the original motion? Commissioner Mead, reserve to read. Yes, sir.
There's been some discussion about, oh, you know, what does it mean, sanctuary? All it really means is that we will comply with Tennessee state law that says we will not expend resources or finances or personnel to enforce laws that will violate the state's constitution or the constitution of the United States. We're all sworn to do that anyhow. Okay? I mean, in the, under the state constitution, it says that the state shall have the right to keep and bear arms, okay? And the only restriction on that, and I think it was a wise one, is that the legislature shall have the power to regulate the wearing of arms with a view to prevent crime. Okay, and I don't think most of us have a lot of difficulty with that. In this county, all we're saying is that we will comply with the state law that's already in place and with our oaths of office that are already in place, many of us, numerous times. I do agree, though, with Mr. Fritz that this shouldn't have taken all this much time. This should have been, I should have made a motion, it would have been seconded, we should have voted, and it should have been passed. And this is not a political party issue. This is a constitutional issue, and what I say is the Constitution is what the Supreme Court found it rules it is, and that's kind of what we've come to. I'm also going to point out that you think, oh, but this isn't going to happen in Tennessee. I follow legislation very carefully, you those of you that know me. Every single year in this state, there are laws, I mean, there are bills introduced to the state legislature that would absolutely violate the Second Amendment. Now, they've been getting beat pretty regular. But when state legislators are ready to submit bills on a regular basis that would violate the Second Amendment and violate the state constitution, I think that's just, that goes to show that we have to stand ready to look at those things. And also, one comment on Mr. Creasy's very good presentation. In the oath of office, one of the things that has existed since the Nuremberg trials, okay, and has been reinforced in the courts again and again, is that it's the lawful orders of the officers appointed over me, even though that's not in there, it is there, because it's been repeatedly supported all the way to the Supreme Court. The guys at the Nuremberg trial didn't do well, saying, well, I was told to do it. And it's the same thing today. It's the same principle exactly. We are saying that we will not take actions or support actions that violate our oath of office. I don't see where that's controversial. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Any other questions, comments on this subject? Let's go to the board. Well, and look, I think it's incumbent, we've had many meetings on this issue. Is that correct, Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, yeah.
What, tell me the committees it's been to. Legislative, operations. And look, I mean no disrespect to the folks here that want to speak, but we've had, and discussion after discussion, everyone's talked, and I guarantee you, I open up this floor, we'll be here for another hour talking about this issue. I think it's incumbent on this body now to take action. Vote your conscience, vote it up or vote it down, and I think we've discussed it around the table here pretty well. Have any of you out there that want to speak not spoken to your commissioners? Okay, so you've had some say-so already with your commissioners, so hopefully they'll carry your message through, whatever that message is, for Second Amendment or against it. So, no other discussions on this up here for the commissioners? Comments, questions? Commissioner Jamison?
Am I correct that if this passes, we're going to be saying we're okay, the sanctuary type of thing?
That is correct. It would be passing the resolution declaring support of the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. It's pretty short. I'll read it real quick. Whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution adopted in seventeen ninety-one as a part of the Bill of Rights protects the inalienable rights, or excuse me, inalienable and individual rights of the people to keep and bear arms. And whereas Article One, Section Twenty-Six of the Tennessee Constitution states, quote, "That the citizens of this state have the right to keep and bear arms for their common defense, but the legislature should have power by law to regulate the wearing of arms with a view to prevent crime." And whereas the United States Supreme Court in District Columbia, Heller Five-Four USS Five-Seven-O Two Thousand Eight, affirmed an individual's right to possess firearms unconnected with a service and militia for the traditional lawful purposes such as self-defense within the home. And whereas the United States Supreme Court in McDonald versus Chicago Five-Six-One US Seven-Four-Two in two thousand and ten affirmed that the right of the individual to keep and bear arms as protected as the Second Amendment is incorporated by the Due Process Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment against the states. And whereas the United States Supreme Court in United States versus Miller Three-O-Seven US One-Seven-Four nineteen thirty-nine opined that the firearms that are a part of the ordinary military equipment or with use could contribute to the common defense are protected by the Second Amendment. And whereas the desire of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners to declare the support of the Second Amendment to United States Constitution and protect the inalienable rights and individual rights to keep and bear arms. Whereas the members of Anderson County Commission each took an oath to support and defend the United States Constitution and the laws in which are not deemed unconstitutional by the Court of Confident Jurisdiction. Now be therefore resolved this day, so on and so forth. Any questions? Let's go vote. Yes is for this amendment, no is against the amendment. It'll take nine to support. This is the resolution. I apologize. No amendment. We've already taken action on the amendment. This is for the resolution itself. Yes is in support, no is against. Takes nine to pass. Nine passes. Nine to six. Next item, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mottengy made a motion to approve a no-interest money down commercial real estate contract with the contract date on or before March twenty-four, twenty-twenty, with a scheduled closing of two P.M. on March twenty-fourth. With note that the contract reads the date may be extended, agreed upon in writing by both buyer and seller. Authorization for the mayor to act upon the contract terms that allow for survey and title approval as well as negotiating identified repairs with seller. Execution date to be set for February twenty-four, twenty-twenty. Purchase not to exceed five hundred thousand. Motion was accepted by Commissioner Mead. Motion passed forward for full commission for approval.
Full movement, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Second, any discussion on the motion presented? Now, is it my understanding that this is to purchase the ninety-six Mariner property? So this motion is to allow the mayor to go purchase that property? Correct? Enter into a contract, and then the mayor will come back to this body and will approve the contract? Is that, no?
The contract was approved and authorized and heard to execute the contract.
Is that your understanding, Mayor? Is that what you're saying, is you're just going to go execute the contract and negotiate it the best you can and then sign it up to five hundred thousand?
Yes, and then all the funding authorizations are, I mean, this wouldn't work if the funding authorizations are not approved in the rest of the meeting. The motion that was passed was that I would, because it does take the clerk some time, so I would execute it on February twenty-fourth with, and then I submitted to Annette for the minutes from operations, a closing date of March twenty-fourth. And of course, that is all contingent upon, you know, the terms of the contract. And I asked for authorization to work with the sellers on negotiating the identified repairs from the home inspection. And it was a not to exceed five hundred thousand.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Meredith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to spend, I think I've made a lot of comments on this the last two months. I'm not going to spend, but I'm going to vote against. I just don't think this is a good location. I'd be interested to see how Commissioner Anderson and Waddell feel about their public hearing they had the other night, but I just can't, I think it's the wrong location. Again, I've spoken in depth with Ron many occasions. We're still friends. We're all Rotarians and church members. But we both live in the same subdivision. We don't know why the same people don't call us, but anyhow, even with him on the radio saying, "Call Rick," I've still only got two calls for that, but I just can't go against the ones that are calling me down there in the subdivision. On top of, I really think the senior center deserves a place in here in the middle of town. I really truly do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too have expressed the same concerns about the location. And I also am waiting for answers to your questions, Mr. Chairman, along with questions that I have posed as well. So I I want the seniors to have a center. I want it to be the right place. I want them to have all of the places, the facilities that they need, and the backing and support that we can give. But again, I'm waiting for answers to questions, because a metal building is going to be an energy hog. I want to see inspections, structural in particular. I want to see inspections, structural in particular, costs of gas, costs of utilities, and an agreement to say who's going to pay for what. So that's going to be my reluctance today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Any other questions? Commissioner Mead.
As the maker of the motion, I just wanted to make a final statement.
Does that mean I need to talk now?
Say again.
Does that mean I need to talk now? I'd like to talk.
Oh, no, no.
Was you getting ready to make your final statement?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay. I didn't want to.
Yeah, I just wanted to get that on the table.
And, well, thank you. I just didn't want to, if you're making your final statement, I wanted to talk before you. So any other folks before I talk? Jay, my question is on this motion. It seems to me it allows the mayor to go purchase the building, which was done properly and the Operations Committee brought to this body, we're getting ready to take action on it. My question is, once the building is acquired by the county on behalf of the mayor's request for the senior center, what tools will be used to manage that facility in terms of, are we going to enter a memorandum of understanding, or what's the process once we acquire the building?
That's totally up to this body. I can draft an MOU at any time. Nobody's asked for one, but I'll be glad to do that.
Do you think it would be appropriate for us to consider a memorandum of understanding to outline all of the, you know, some of my questions, and I did get information back from Robbie, and I appreciate it, Robbie, back there, and Cherie did send me some information, and the mayor sent me some, and I apologize, I didn't even read it today, so I haven't had time. But, so, I'm not one to stop the process, but I would like to have something that we can lean on as a commission, because I think having a memorandum of understanding would probably be appropriate unless the mayor has any objections to it, but I think it would spell out all these things. You know, I was on the radio today with Ron, and, you know, all the questions have been asked. What about the utilities? What about the cutting of the grass? What about the expansion of the kitchen? What about, you know, all of these questions that we're not going to answer tonight, but I think the memorandum of understanding, once the mayor has made the acquisition of the property, that I think it is, in my opinion, appropriate for us to have a memorandum of understanding for the property, so we all are clear on who pays what cost, how it's going to be paid, how it's going to be managed and maintained, operated, so on and so forth.
Understanding your concerns, I thought it would be a county building and managed by the mayor, but if you see that differently and you have other things that need to be spelled out in the MOU, I would encourage you to have that in place prior to the closing date. Mayor, what's your closing date in there?
Well, I have March 24, yeah, I have March 24 on there, but the contract does say, like, if there's some kind of issues.
Thirty days, but I don't know what the issue would be with the building.
I can't imagine there being any.
You've done your due diligence, but I would encourage you, if you vote tonight, allow her to get the contract signed and execute that contract, but before we get the deed, do the closing, have that MOU in place. Last time we bought 205 Main, that MOU was not signed prior to the deed, and then it was, they refused to sign it. So that needs to be done ahead of time, is my point.
Let me, and I appreciate it, I was just curious, and no one's asked me to ask that question, I was just curious. Mayor, are you okay with that? If we, I mean, what's your thoughts? I mean.
We have, we got a county commission meeting before that, closing day, right?
Sixteenth, March, yeah.
We do, and in fact, on the timeline, I said, you know, execution date of February 24, then negotiate repairs with a seller, title insurance from February 24 to March 23 is what I put on my timeline, but I said return to commission with update on March 26. So we do have another operations meeting if we want to do an MOU, and I don't see any, I mean, I'm sure what you're thinking is, who pays for what? You want to see it in writing, that it's an agreement, what I've told you, you know, those costs would be, and what we've currently been doing, plus some of the other things you put in place, like if we leased the facility, how would the revenues be shared, which we've not even discussed that, but I'm happy to do that.
So you're okay with?
And just so we're all in agreement in what we agree to.
And that's something you can bring us from your perspective?
I mean, I would say that existing.
I'll be glad to draft it, but I need some ideas, some areas you want to cover, and I'll have it ready for you next operations meeting, but.
I think the body can certainly get some emails out, whoever has questions.
Please, send me your ideas, I'll put it in.
I just want to make sure.
At operations.
So Mayor, you're okay with that? If we, but I don't want us telling you how the MOU is going to be. I mean, we'll give the questions, and then you can construct it and tell us, you know, what all will be covered and answer our questions. That's my vision.
If you want Mayor to draft it or myself, I'll be glad to get it.
You can work together and draft it, or, I mean, I'm not.
Mayor, would you send me your points?
Sure.
Cherie, we're, Cherie here. Would you send me the things that you'd like to see in there, and in the county commission? Please, send me what you'd like to see in the MOU. I'll have it ready by operations meeting.
And I'll just say this, I did have a lot of questions, and I don't know if I have all the answers, but I do appreciate getting all the answers. So I'll study those more and the finances and all that kind of stuff. I just don't want this body to get in another position where we, if we do vote to purchase the building tonight, that we didn't ask all the right questions, and, you know, we didn't put this mechanism in place to protect this or protect that, because I'm very concerned we're going to buy a building, and then what happens after that purchase? So I'm going to be confident in the mayor and what she's asking. She's asking this body to buy the building, if I'm understanding her correctly. She's went through all the processes and looked at the property and the evaluations and all those kinds of things. She's found the funding mechanisms to acquire this property, and she's presented all those through all the appropriate committees, the Budget Committee, the Finance Committee, the Operations Committee, if I'm missing any committees, you can tell me. But, so, and I'm going to make my decision based on the mayor's recommendation, and then how that happens after that will be still the mayor's responsibility with Cherie running the senior center. That's where I'll be standing. Okay, Commissioner Mead, I'm sorry, I'm so long-winded. Oh, Tim, I'm sorry, I'll go to Tim, and then I'll come back to you as the maker of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a point of clarity, that this still relies on the funding mechanism for this to work.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Would you mind if somebody spoke in the audience?
Absolutely not.
Come on up, Ron.
Briefly. All I wanted to do is tell you guys thank you. I have spoken to most everybody on this commission personally. I don't think I got to talk to Chuck or Dr. Smallridge, very briefly with Bob after a meeting, but thank you, I didn't get to speak to Denver, but I just want to say thank you. I got to sit in with Josh when he had his town hall meeting, and literally, I've spoken to people from Northland County all the way into Oak Ridge, a number of folks, but I know you guys are considering this. I know Rick and I have a difference of opinion on what our neighborhood thinks, but I just appreciate the conversation, I appreciate the deliberation. You guys, we really do have an opportunity to do something for a large group of people in our county that need it. If I could, would I pick it up and scoot it into the center of town? I would. I supported the building up by the interstate, too, because of the facility, not the location. It's the facility that we need. But I just wanted to tell you thank you sincerely. I know I have, with Commissioner Denenberg, Shane here just a few weeks ago, I've communicated with Jerry by email, Robert and I have talked a lot, Tim and I, like I said, Josh let me come up to his town hall. But thank you guys for your consideration, and I hope that you vote to the affirmative tonight. Thank you.
And Ron, you still are on the board for the Anderson County Senior Services 501 Tennessee.
I am, sir.
Are you the chairman or just?
I am not the chairman, I'm just a board member. Brandon Pelazaro is our chairman.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we're going to let Commissioner Mead make his final statement. Commissioner Mead.
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion about having the right place, okay? How about having the wrong place? How many of you would have 50 people at your house if you only had one bathroom? That happens, that happens most days over at our senior center we have right now. The senior center we're using right now doesn't have adequate parking, it doesn't have adequate ADA requirements, it only has one bathroom, and we have all these people packed in there, and it's limiting the use of the, by our seniors, because they get there and literally have to go home because they can't find a place to park, not even after the whole lawn has been utilized. I have, and for some time now, I haven't heard a concern about this, about this building or its location that hasn't been addressed at length in meeting after meeting. We've looked at the utility uses, we've looked at the parking, we've looked at all the ADA compliance, we've looked at all things that have to be changed. We had an honest to God, really independent appraisal done that was good news for the price we could buy this place for. We've had, all the inspections we didn't do at 205 have all been done at this building, all the considerations we might have missed at the 205 building have been taken care of. It's time to move ahead and do the right thing for the seniors of Anderson County. Now, I live in Oak Ridge, we've got a really nice senior center there, but you know what? That's really too far for the people on this other side of the county to go to. So I just encourage you to go ahead and support this and support the financial stuff that comes afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Okay. Good discussion. Any other questions? Commissioner White? You're over there studying, I see, sir. Thank you. Good to see you. All right. No other questions, let's go to the board. A yes is for the mayor and her recommendation to go purchase and outlined, as she has outlined with the funding. A no is, no, you don't want to buy the property.
Can we go board and want?
Commissioner McCamey, I wouldn't be surprised if you have that ability. And I mean that as a compliment, sir. All right. I guess I got to lock in my vote. You distracted me, I almost hit that red button. Nine yes, six noes, motion passes. Congratulations to the seniors. Now, I just will ask you seniors to have that same applause all the way through, and six months from now, when you need a new refrigerator, you remember that applause, okay? Okay. Thank you all, and I appreciate your patience. I know this board, we may seem slow to you, but we're just doing what, we're trying to make sure we make the best decision, and we appreciate everybody, appreciate the mayor, appreciate McCamey and all those that have been involved in trying to get it done, so, and you too, Cherie, keep up the good work and get ready, because you're going to have a bigger building, and I know you're ready and up to the task. Okay. Any other questions on that? Let's move forward. Next item, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing that I should have mentioned earlier on that is they've got a proposed walking trail for that area, too.
That'll come in that memorandum of understanding, we're going to have all kinds of things in there. I'm just kidding, just kidding. Go ahead. I like the walking trail idea.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to support a resolution 20-02-803 seeking assistance from the state of Tennessee for the purpose of purchasing the facility to adequately house and operate the Anderson County offices on aging and senior center for up to 500,000. Commissioner Mead, seconded a motion, motion passed forward, full commission for approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Mead, sir. Seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on that motion?
What's the motion? The motion is to go to, actually Reagan, there's a letter there.
Motion is to support a resolution.
$500,000.
Yeah, and asking the state for assistance for the senior center, up to 500,000 dollars. Commissioner Mead, did you have a question, sir?
I just wanted to make a final statement.
Sure.
Just the fact that Representative Reagan is also, and Senator McNally, is that what, why also am I forgetting the name of his real position, is the head of the Senate, have both shown support for this, and they're going to do their very best to see what they can do. It's already been announced by our state legislature that they have $700 million more than they expected in their, in the bank right now. And so it's very likely that this kind of a thing would be supported, and so that's why we went ahead to make this request. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. Any other questions? All in favor on this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Commissioner Isabel, Chairman? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner McCamey.
Make it a part of the record that that vote was unanimous.
For, oh, yes, sir, that's a good idea. On that last motion, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Note that in the.
Commissioner McCamey has requested that the last resolution, Resolution 20-02-803, be reflected in the record as unanimous. Thank you, good idea, McCamey. Go ahead, Commissioner Chairman.
Commissioner Yeager made a motion to approve Resolution 20-02-802 to allow turkey hunting on county-owned property consisting of only the Black House Valley former landfill site, and to adopt restrictions and procedures for permits related thereto. Commissioner Wondell seconded the motion, motion passed forward, full commission for approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next one that was, that came out of Operations is actually under Jay's report, intergovernmental committee TIF discussion. Jay, do you want to?
You can go ahead and take it up, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve IDB's resolution recommendation forward to full commission for approval. Commissioner Jameson seconded the motion, motion passed. Commissioner Creasy admitted the motion to have the IDB present at the county commission meeting to answer any questions.
Commissioner Isabel with the motion, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any questions on that? It will be outlined later in Jay Yeager's report with the resolution, what those amounts are. Right?
You have those amounts in the operations report, it's 3 million, you have the four rented areas of Anderson County.
I'm sorry.
And of course, the IDB in Oak Ridge sets their own amount, and then you've got, in Clinton, it's still 500, it's still 3 million, but Rocky Top, Norris, Oliver Springs, you're down to 500,000.
City Norris.
Threshold, city Norris. So it's, the investment's much smaller to try to stimulate economic development in those areas. Any questions on that? I have heard back from Phil Cry, the IDB attorney, he looked it over, said he has absolutely no problem with it. I had one question from Commissioner about why it and Oak Ridge mentioned in there. Well, Oak Ridge has their own industrial development board, and they set the threshold down there. Any other questions I can entertain?
Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, one of the questions I think that was brought up during the email correspondence was the, maybe the rural areas of the county weren't specifically mentioned. Did we ever get an answer on that?
I've added that in there. It still remains the same, at 3 million. We had a conversation at Operations Committee where we may want, and the mayor, I think, supports this, we may want to look at some of those areas. Again, we have the David Jones Industrial Park that is in the unincorporated areas, but right now it stands at 3 million.
I'm concerned, then, I'll address my comments to the chair, my concerns is, and I appreciate the help for the city of Rocky Top, but there's more area up in my end of the county that that threshold's got to be lower than it.
We're all for that, and we brought it up and discussed it at Operations, it's just going to take some time to identify that, and we're going to have to put some geographic parameters and say, you know, this is, and sometimes that becomes arbitrary, because it's across the street, maybe 3 million, on the other side, maybe 500,000. So we may have to do it maybe by commission zones, I don't know, but we'll have to look at some way to stimulate the economy in other areas and lower that threshold for investment. But that, we, from what I understand, this needs, this portion needs to be put in place now, and then we need to come back and explore that. Mayor, did you tell me or did I read that you had some other ideas you wanted us to explore on those?
I presented some to Operations, I think.
Okay, but anyway, if you, if you would, it's your pleasure, please vote on this one tonight, let's dispense with it, if it fails, then we'll adjust it, and the other issues, we'll go ahead and make another resolution, is that we vet those issues out.
Jay, quick question before, to follow up on Commissioner Vow's question, and I'm trying to locate the resolution, I know it's around somewhere.
I sent it to you individually, it's an email that I sent to you.
But wasn't it 3 million? And then going to move it down to 500,000?
500,000, that's correct.
That's correct.
Just for those municipalities which were mentioned, Oliver Springs, Norris, Rocky Top, and to Commissioner Vow's point, and you mentioned this in the operation, is the possibility of adding the word unincorporated to potentially cover other areas later, as to Commissioner Vow's point.
That's correct. That's the discussion I was speaking to.
Okay. So pass this first, is your suggestion, if we would, and then we'll address that. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. Appreciate the clarification.
You've got the corrected copy via email.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Commissioner McCamey, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I intend to support it as is. I believe it's a good thing for Oliver Springs, Rocky Top, and Norris. But I did bring up in operations about the Claxton area and some of the rural areas. And I understand that it's going to be presented back to the ID board and they will come back with another recommendation that we can approve at a later date. So I intend to support it as is today.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. I agree with you. Commissioner Fritz, sir.
Commissioner McCamey just stole my thunder before the fagging all that.
No, you're Claxton. Go ahead, sir.
I'd be ready to say, you know, we...
District one. I need to correct myself. District one.
I mean, I've seen a lot of statements made, you know, like, okay, Oliver Springs, they got, you know, so we don't need grocery stores. Where you're five minutes or 10 minutes down the road, you got the superstore Kroger. 10 minutes down the road, you got from Rocky Top, you got the superstore Walmart. With Claxton, you've got probably one of the largest districts in Anderson County out there. I mean, you look at the number of people that live in the Claxton in District one. I mean, there's still... We've got two large voting districts out there. And people out there still have to drive a long way. That's one we... My wife says she'd love to get up and move anytime because of how far she has to drive to just to get to a grocery store. There's nothing out in Claxton except for either a Wiggles or a bread box. And outside of that, you have to get in the car and drive into Oak Ridge, all the way into... Far into Clinton or all the way into Knoxville. There is nothing for the large thousands of people in District one. And I think the people out there at all time asking me, when are we going to do something to help develop the people out in areas out in District one? And I think District one is constantly overlooked and for the large number of people that live in that area and the revenue and the tax dollars that is brought in from that area. And it's about time that we stepped up to the plate and do something to help the people in that area.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. And let's not forget the Marathon and JB's Market down there. We don't want to cut them short.
Oh, yes.
But I agree with you, sir. And I appreciate your comments. Commissioner Meredith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think there was any intent to leave anyone out. I think the need was trying to help our commissioners in Rocky Top. That was the comments of the industrial board. Again, this can be amended any other way we want it. But there's no intent to cut out Claxton.
No, sir. No, sir. No, sir, we don't think that.
There are several projects there that's doable as soon as we can figure out what we're going to do with Edge Moreau, Mr. Chairman. So that's going to be an issue.
You think we'll still be alive?
Oh, yeah. I don't know how old you are, but I'll be here, Mr. Chairman.
I hope so.
We've got a 39-year-old, a 29-year-old that'll see it.
Yeah, he'll see it. In fact, he'll go right along his property. He'll have a walking trail, bicycle trail and everything. He'll be set. Appreciate the comments. And I... Commissioner Meredith, obviously you're involved with it. And do you see an opportunity by us making this change that it would help benefit that area by going down to this lower threshold, perhaps?
Well, I think it's common sense. When you go from $3 million to a half a million dollar investment, yes.
Okay.
We've already got a couple of calls about it.
I appreciate you.
And I think the city of Rocky Top will pass this resolution if we pass it Thursday night. So it'll go into effect pretty quick with them.
So I'd say, oh, Commissioner Vow, at the next operations meeting, we'll have a different motion.
Yeah.
And I'd say Commissioner Fritz will have me second it. All right. Sorry. Commissioner Isabel?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is in intergovernmental and in operations, we talked about the intergovernmental committee chairman, Commissioner Denenberg, actually working closely with the IDB board about these TIFs. Now, if when you've got something that somebody wants to come into an inner... Into one of the other districts that we've talked about, like Claxton or Briceville, that can be considered and brought straight to intergovernmental operations and solved. Because I think what the IDB board mission is, is to help develop these other areas as well, the unincorporated areas. And something to remember is that this board passed a tourism district that helps, just like the IDB board, for place like one time we had somebody who's interested in doing a zipline in Briceville. That's been several years ago. But that would have fell into that as well. But I just wanted to let everybody know that the intergovernmental committee is working on that to work with the IDB board to help move things along.
Good comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mead.
I just want to make sure we understand that this is just a first start. And at the operations committee meeting, we ended a long discussion about this. And the problem with adding some of these other areas right now is we either have to say the whole county is this or all the unincorporated areas are the same. But if we want to actually pick out areas, we have to have clearly defined geographical boundaries. We didn't have those. So we say, hey, look, here are these places that already have clearly defined geographical boundaries that we think need this. So let's go ahead and get this passed. And then with over time, we can get these other boundaries and then expand it. So it's just a first step.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. All right. No other questions, I see? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Does that conclude your report, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. I didn't think so. You've been a busy man.
Yeah, we also got to take up juries.
Yes, sir, we do.
Commissioner Yeager made a motion to approve the motor vehicle lease. Commissioner McCamey seconded the motion. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval. And that motor vehicle lease was for Claxton Volunteer Fire Department.
Was it Claxton? I thought it was...
Andersonville.
Andersonville, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We already did Claxton, I believe.
Yeah.
Is this the motion makers or is this old? Did you make that motion?
That's the old one.
Motion by Commissioner Isabel, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is Commissioner Creasy's. Resolution.
I wasn't ready. The... My motion was to bring to the operations the resolution that I was supporting. But the other resolution has already passed. Not sure it would be appropriate to use the word sanctuary in that original resolution or not. I know Phil had a question about sanctuary. But I've got a... If that's an issue with anyone, I've got another... A second one that I didn't use the word sanctuary. But I'd like to make a motion that the resolution I submitted, be approved.
Commissioner Creasy would like Resolution 20-02-806 be approved. That resolution reads as follows. Resolution declaring support of our many freedoms and rights contained in the United States Constitution and all subsequent amendments. Whereas the United States Constitution has 27 amendments ranging from 1791 until 1992. And whereas these amendments are instrumental to the health and welfare of those who are bound by them to include freedom of assembly, freedom of religion, freedom of speech, abolition of slavery, the right to vote, the right to bear arms, the right to tax, the right to be free from unreasonable search and seizure, due process for all, and the many other rights integral to the well-being of the United States and its citizenry, if I could say the word. Whereas it's desire of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners to declare the support for the United States Constitution and the amendments to honor those who took the oath to protect the same, to honor those who fought to establish and protect these rights, to inform our citizenry of critical rights found in these beloved documents to help protect the same, now therefore be resolved this day, and so on and so forth. That is the motion before us by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion on this motion? Resolution 20-02-806. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Jamison, I apologize.
You went to the past. Is he putting back the sanctuary in there?
Yes, sanctuary is.
Is that what you're saying? You want the sanctuary in there?
Well, it depends on the commission. I have another one here if I'm fine that doesn't have sanctuary in it. But if you're comfortable with sanctuary, vote for it.
The one I read didn't say anything about sanctuary, did it? Oh, I didn't get down there. Now therefore be resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session this 18th day of February 2020 that we hereby declare Anderson County to be a sanctuary county for the United States Constitution and its amendments.
No problem.
Okay. Any questions? Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Isabel.
Well, no. What I just want to do is clarification because I didn't think the board was cleared on that motion and second.
Okay. Let's clear the board and let's get a motion.
I think that was the second.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll do it now.
Yeager, and I think, were you the mo...
McCamey.
Oh, okay. Yeager's motion, seconded by McCamey. Thank you for that point of clarification. We've already had discussion. So let's go to the board and vote. Yes is for support of this resolution. No is against.
Is it too late to amend it?
Yes, it is.
Oh.
Isn't it?
Yeah. It's already been called to a vote.
Okay. Is that right, parliamentary?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to be sure. All right. So yes is to support it, no is to vote against it. 13 yes, 2 noes. Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Creasy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That concludes the operations committee report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to committee reports. Everybody okay? You need a break? You want to take a five-minute break? Let's come back here at 7:55. Let's come back here at 8:10? Or 8:05? 8:10. 8:10. Take a break.
That's the benefit of that, eh?
We really should have had at least two more.
I was smoking. I didn't notice it. Let's watch that one, you know.
All right, we're back. Thank you, everybody. Hey, real quick, we'd like to send our thoughts and prayers out to Annette Pruitt, our Chief Deputy Administrator extraordinaire. She's homesick and just want to keep our thoughts and prayers with her. And also, Commissioner White, who has the birthday, Ms. Kim back there?
Ms. Regina Culpin.
Regina Culpin, I thought you said Regina. Happy birthday. Requires a fifteen-minute speech. You could give it.
I'm thirty.
Man.
I'm thirty-one.
Kim looked at me like, not me. Well, happy birthday, all right. We are now at...
Purchasing.
Purchasing.
And everybody else has their birthday.
Where is purchasing at?
Up here.
Okay, next is purchasing. Catherine, there you are. Good evening.
All right, so contracts approved by the law director, we just have one submitting for your approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
Hit your button there, help them out back there, helps them. Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on the item? Do we do a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, contracts pending law director approval. We have four that have now been approved by the law director submitting for your approval individually or as a group.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve, seconded by Commissioner Meredith.
As a group.
As a group, Commissioner Meredith. Any discussions on the group? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under other business, I just had some informational points, I don't know if you want me to go over, otherwise I can go down to the next action item.
What's the other information?
Update on the bid of 205 Maine.
Yes, we'd love to hear an update on 205 Maine.
Yeah. No, the bids will close April twenty-ninth, that was ninety days after I put the bid out. We have it on LoopNet, Vendor Registry, the Chamber of Commerce. Emailed fourteen local commercial realtors. I'm going to put an ad in the Knoxville Sentinel, and any other suggestions are very welcome. I'm not used to selling property.
Catherine, I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but how many, is it right at two acres or is it over two acres?
I think it's one point eight-seven.
Almost two acres, okay. Sure.
Any communication with anybody yet?
We had somebody call asking about a walkthrough, but our front desk person let them know that they needed an email, and I haven't received an email.
I've got a gentleman that's emailed me.
Excellent. Do we have a finder's fee if anyone in the county finds somebody to buy this?
We were allowing...
Like McDonald's or something?
I will.
I will too. I'll step, I'll take them to Harrison's.
I'll take them for a big bag.
If anybody finds somebody to buy 205 Maine, we'll take them to Harrison's. Wow, man, we might solve the budget here in a minute.
Well, we are allowing up to that three percent commission, so it's kind of like a finder's fee.
That's good, that's good. No, thank you for the update, and that's on April twenty-ninth when it'll be open?
Yes.
And then, once it's open, the purchasing will make the recommendation to who? To this body?
I will bring that information to a purchasing committee, and then they'll make a recommendation to come here.
On where to go, okay. Sounds good, all right, thank you.
And then the next item, action item, is a contract, just one contract. It's also been approved by Jay now with Tennessee Emergency Management for EMA submitting for your approval.
Motion to approve, Jamison. Is that you? Seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Creasy, did you have a question?
Yeah, she was speaking about 205 Maine, and I was just remembering, we was going to have an environmental assessment done by one of the prospective bidders, and have you received that, or will you receive it, or will the mayor receive it? And when will we get that report, or have you heard anything on that?
I have not heard anything, I don't know if the mayor has.
We don't have any results yet. Roger did work with them to get on-site, and I know he's done that, so they've been out there, but I don't know the results yet. They've not communicated with us. We did get a hazardous material survey, because we were looking at perhaps a bid for demolishing as one of the many options on the table, and that did not return any results of asbestos or lead. Of course, that's not to say that they could encounter something, but, because those are just samples, but anyhow, we did use a reputable company to do that, so that's good news.
Okay, and the other question then, since you're at the podium, you may know the answer since Roger'd been there. You know which engineering perm he hired to do the assessment?
For...
The environmental.
That's Rusty Wallace, I don't know who they're using.
Okay, Roger would know he was with them.
He prob, I can ask, absolutely. Yeah, I just know he, they've asked to get on-site a couple of times, maybe in, they may not have even conducted the assessment yet. They may have just been looking at what they want to look at. Their main concern is if there's any oil tanks, you know, under the ground, they're not doing some kind of full environmental assessment.
Yeah, that's, gasoline underground tanks are usually the big deal, yeah.
Thank you, Creasy. Commissioner McCamey?
Mr. Chairman, I, since Rusty Wallace is the one paying for that and doing it at their own expense, they may not want to disclose that to any other potential buyer. I would say that would be information they would like to just keep for themselves.
And we included in the bid that vendors or potential bidders do have the right, at their own expense, to do what he's doing.
Right, but I'm saying...
We didn't address whether or not they're not sharing, that would be a Jay question if it came up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they would.
Not a public record.
Right.
But if they do share it with us, we have to share what he might have.
Right, and that's why I'm saying they may be reluctant to disclose that.
Okay, any other questions on the motion? Commissioner Isbell, you have questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just for information purposes, I met again with the general manager there, Mark Trout, and he is preparing something that he could present to us for commission about what they intend to do and maybe what the retail sales amount would be going forward, so I just throw that out there for informational purposes.
I assume they'll be putting the bid in? You're good. Any other questions on the motion? What's the motion again?
That wasn't actually questions about the motion, the motion was to approve the contract.
Tell me the motion, tell me what we're voting on here.
The contract for EMA from TMA for a grant for homeland security.
Thank you. We got a motion, a second. Any questions on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Catherine, have a good evening.
Thanks, all.
Okay, next is Budget Report, Robbie Holberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the first thing I have is the Cash and Fund Balance Report. Looking at the General Fund, restricted funds are at one point four million, committed funds are at two million fifty-nine thousand fifteen dollars, assigned funds are five hundred nineteen thousand eight fifty-seven, unassigned fund balance is four million seven hundred fifty-one thousand five hundred eighty-nine, for a total fund balance of eight point eight million. Cash is at eleven point one million, which is up two point four million from last year at this time.
Any questions? Is, what, you kind of probably covered it, I'm trying to find the page. Anybody got a page on that?
It was the, should have been the first.
It's probably another attachment, I gotta click on. What, the sales revenue still up though?
Yes, well, I reported on that last month, we haven't got January's in yet, it should come in around the twentieth, and, but, we did verify that what we got last month was correct, though, so that is our...
Okay.
The five hundred thirty-eight thousand was the county's.
Thank you.
And they're also reporting on EMS after January, they've collected their sixty-two percent of their revenue, and their expenditures are at fifty-six percent. So, they're, they're right on, right where they should be after six, seven months.
Cool.
Any questions on those?
So, I'm gonna read real quickly, Commissioner Yeager lending this to me.
Sure.
The cash trends, you've already spoke on it, and I don't mean to jump backwards, but fifteen sixteen, four million seven hundred thousand roughly. Cash trends in nineteen twenty, eleven million one hundred thousand. That's fifteen sixteen to nineteen twenty. Cash trends are pretty good in Anderson County. Thank you, go ahead, I just wanted to say that. What was it last year?
Last year was...
Eight point six.
Eight point six, so we're at two point four.
Okay, and you said that, I apologize.
And next month should be our, is usually the biggest cash month, I mean, February was when we have all the...
Trustees got something to do with that, don't you?
Tax collections, yes. All right, moving on to the agendas, to the budget amendments. Group two, transfers looking for approval as a group?
Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve as a group, sir. Seconded by Commissioner Meredith. These require a board vote, don't they?
Yes, sir.
Let's go to the board, Brian. Motion passes unanimous, fifteen zero.
All right, group three appropriations from the school, there was just one for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Go to the board. Motion passes fifteen zero, unanimous.
Group four is appropriations non-school, seeking approval as a group. Or I'd be happy to answer any questions or pull one out.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Let's go to the board. Fifteen yes, motion passes unanimous.
Okay, group five transfers, I do need to pull number forty-four out, because they have a correction on it, but the other three could be passed as a group.
So, you're pulling out forty-four, you say?
Yes, yes, for brief explanation.
Okay. All right, you gave a motion for all those, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Let's go to the board. Motion passes fifteen zero, unanimous.
Okay, on number forty-four, on the increase, the one seventy-seven, the educational capital outlay, both of those codes should be seven six one hundred five ten and seven oh seven, and we had that wrong in the budget amendment, so I need to have this, this one approved separately to make that correction. And all we're doing is moving money, when, when we did the budget this year, we put, I put the capital outlay funds in the nine one three zero zero seven two two, and Dr. P...
Thank you for the update, and that's on April 29th when it'll be open?
Yes.
And then, once it's open, the purchasing will make the recommendation to who? To this body?
I will bring that information to a purchasing committee, and then they'll make a recommendation-
On where to go, okay.
-to come here.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
And then the next item, action item, is a contract, just one contract. It's also been approved by Jay now with Tennessee Emergency Management for EMA submitting for your approval.
Motion to approve, Jamison? Is that you? Seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Creasy, did you have a question?
Yeah, she was speaking about 205, and I was just remembering. We was gonna have an environmental assessment done by one of the prospective bidders. And have you received that, or will you receive it, or will the mayor receive it? And when will we get that report, or have you heard anything on that?
I have not heard anything. I don't know if the mayor has.
We don't have any results yet. Roger did work with them to get on site, and I know he's done that. So they've been out there, but I don't know the results yet. They've not communicated with us. We did get a hazardous material survey, because we were looking at perhaps a bid for demolishing as one of the many options on the table, and that did not return any results of asbestos or lead. Of course, that's not to say that they could encounter something, but because those are just samples. But anyhow, we did use a reputable company to do that, so that's good news.
Okay, and the other question then, since you're at the podium-
Sure.
-you may know the answer, since Roger'd been there. You know which engineering perm he hired to do the assessment?
For-
The environmental.
That's Rusty Wallace. I don't know who they're using.
Okay. Roger would know he was with them?
He prob- I can ask, absolutely. Yeah, I just know he-
I'll send him an email.
They've asked to get on site a couple of times, maybe in- they may not have even conducted the assessment yet. They may have just been looking at what they want to look at. Their main concern is if there's any oil tanks, you know, under the ground. They're not doing some kind of full environmental assessment.
Yeah, that's- gasoline underground tanks are usually the big deal, yeah.
Thank you, Creasy. Commissioner McCamey?
Mr. Chairman, I- Since Rusty Wallace is the one paying for that and doing it at their own expense, they may not want to disclose that to any other potential buyer. I would say that would be information they would like to just keep for themselves.
And we included in the bid that vendors or potential bidders do have the right, at their own expense, to do what he's doing.
Right, but I'm saying-
We didn't address whether or not sharing. That would be a Jay question if it came up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they would.
Not a public record.
I couldn't remember.
Right.
Have to share it with us. But if they do share it with us, we have to share what he might have.
Right, and that's why I'm saying they may be reluctant to-
I'll bet they aren't.
-to disclose that.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion? Commissioner Isabelle, you have questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just for information purposes, I met again with the general manager there, Mark Trout, and he is preparing something that he could present to us for commission about what they intend to do and maybe what the retail sales amount would be going forward. So I just throw that out there for informational purposes.
I assume they'll be putting the bid in? You're good. Any other questions on the motion? What's the motion again?
That wasn't actually questions about the motion.
No, no, that's, that's-
It was to approve the contract.
Yeah, what- tell me the motion, tell me the, what we're voting on here.
The contract for EMA from TMA for-
Yes.
A grant for homeland security.
Thank you. We got a motion, a second. Any questions on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Catherine. Have a good evening. Okay, next is budget report. Robbie Holberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the first thing I have is the cash and fund balance report. Looking at the general fund, restricted funds are at 1.4 million. Committed funds are at 2,059,015 dollars. Assigned funds are 519,857. Unassigned fund balance is 4,751,589, for a total fund balance of 8.8 million. Cash is at 11.1 million, which is up 2.4 million from last year at this time.
Any questions? Is, uh, what, you kind of probably covered it. I'm trying to find the page. Anybody got a page on that?
It was the- should've been the first.
Uh, it's probably another attachment I gotta click on. What, the sales revenue still up, though? I mean, sales?
Yes, well, I reported on that last month. We haven't got January's in yet. It should come in around the 20th. And, um, but we did verify that what we got last month was correct, though, so that is our-
Okay.
The 538,000 was the county's.
Thank you.
And they'll also reporting on EMS after January, they've collected their 62% of their revenue, and their expenditures are at 56%. So they're, they're right on, right where they should be after six, seven months.
Cool.
Any questions on those?
So, I'm gonna read real quickly. Commissioner Yeager lending this to me.
Sure.
You, the cash trends, you've already spoke on it, and I don't mean to jump backwards, but 1516, 4,700,000 roughly. Cash trends in 1920, 11,100,000. That's 1516 to 1920. Cash trends are pretty good in Anderson County. Thank you, go ahead. I just wanted to say that. What was it, last year?
Last year was 8.6. So we're at 2.4.
Okay, and you said that, I apologize.
And next month should be our, is usually the biggest cash month. I mean, February was when we have all-
Trustee's got something to do with that, don't you?
Tax collections, yes. All right, moving on to the agendas, the- To the budget amendments. Group two transfers looking for approval as a group?
Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve as a group, sir. Seconded by Commissioner Meredith. These require a board vote, don't they?
Yes, sir.
Let's go to the board. Brian? Motion passes unanimous, 15-0.
All righty. Group three appropriations from the school, there was just one for $120,000.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Go to the board. Motion passes 15-0, unanimous.
Group four is appropriations non-school, seeking approval as a group. Or I'd be happy to answer any questions or pull one out.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve as a group, sir. Seconded by Commissioner Jamison. Let's go to the board. 15 yes. Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, group, group five transfers, I do need to pull number 44 out, because they have a correction on it, but the other three could be- Passed as a group.
So you're pulling out 44, you say?
Yes, yes, for brief explanation.
Okay. All right. Let's go, you gave a motion for all those, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Let's go to the board. Motion passes 15-0, unanimous.
Okay, on number 44, on the increase, the 177, the educational capital outlay, both of those codes should be 76100, 510, and 707, and we had that wrong in the budget amendment, so I need to have this, this one approved separately to make that correction. And all we're doing is moving money. When, when, when we did the budget this year, we put, I put the capital outlay funds in the 91300722, and Dr. Perret would like it in this code to spend his funds.
Okay. Have a motion to approve. Commissioner Jamison, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Uh, any questions on that? Let's go to the board. Motion passes 15-0, unanimous.
Okay, and group six are appropriations from unassigned fund balance. Seeking approval as a group, or?
Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Yeager, you have a question, sir?
Yes, sir. 47 and 49 both have notes. Uh, could you explain, just to clarify?
47 is utility payments for county buildings. Actually, the increase was in the budget at the beginning of last year, but when we deferred back to last year's budget, it got taken out, so this is Roger putting more money in the utility codes so we can pay the bills for this year that we don't have enough money to pay for them.
Okay.
And which other one did you ask about, I'm sorry?
49.
49? The senior center? Sure. So, on the senior center, we're increasing code 17191150732, senior building, by 225,000. Sorry, wrong one. It's the same one, but we're first taking the money out of general fund. We're decreasing capital improvement fund to 115,000, and undersigned fund balance by 110,000.
Okay.
That's the 200, the half of the payment.
Just wanted to make it clear.
For the building. And the seniors are also donating 25,000 of their donations for that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve, uh, the group?
What's the motion?
Group six.
It's group six appropriations. There are seven of them.
Uh, Fund 101 Finance, Fund 171 Capital Projects Fund, 101101 Finance Buildings, 101101 Finance Senior Center, and 171 Capital Projects Fund.
So, funding for the senior center?
Two of them, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm all vote now.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Any other questions? Let's go to the board. Motion passes 12 yes, 3 no's.
Okay, and group seven miscellaneous, Ron Meredith came to the budget meeting and spoke about the senior building. No action was taken. So that's it for the Budget Committee.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Under, and I didn't ask it, we've already voted on it, but I just was looking at the notes here. Uh, under item 49, where it says decrease revenue codes, decrease reserve codes out of 10139000, unassigned fund balance 115, amendment will be from 10134575 Capital Improvement Fund, and JE will replenish the reserve.
Yes.
What's JE?
Journal entry. We have to do it that way to enter, enter system to get it to work, so it doesn't, so it takes the money. We take it out of 3900, then we give it back to 3900 and take it out of the other code. It's kind of complicated. We put that on there for our benefit, so we remember to make the journal entry.
Seen JE on there before, and I never really-
Yes, journal entry.
Now, I know. Get my CPA license. Continue on, thank you.
Yes, sir. So that's all I have in budget. If anybody else has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Commissioner Isabelle?
Yeah, I just want to make a note that I talked to Andy about leaving the vote totals up longer, and I think he may be doing a split screen or something tomorrow. Little insert, so people at home, you know, because they say it goes so fast, they don't get to see it. So he's doing a little insert, so everybody can see that at home, have a bit more time on the vote.
Oh, that's great. Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate Andy and Channel 95 doing that, absolutely. More information, the better. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll move on to the Finance Committee minutes. The Finance Committee had two meetings this month. February 7th meeting, February 7th meeting were for interviews, and there was a motion, Commissioner Isabelle, seconded by Gary Long, to postpone the committee vote on the candidates until the vote can be placed on the Finance Committee agenda to be scheduled as soon as possible. That meeting's Thursday at 3:30 to vote for the committee, for the Finance Director.
Got a question? Did you have a question?
No, I was there.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
And on the second meeting on February 10th, the regular meeting, the first item was a 10-year capital outlay note for the purpose of purchasing Manor Point facility. Mayor Frank presented a 10-year and 20-year capital outlay note financing options for funding $250,000 toward the Faith Promise Church property at Manor's Point, proposing that the committee approve the 10-year capital outlay note option contingent on a full commission approval of purchase contract for the property with motion by Commissioner Isabel, seconded by Terry Frank, to approve 10-year capital outlay note financing of $250,000.
Have a motion to approve, Commissioner Yeager?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner McCamey? Any discussions? You want a board vote?
Yes, sir, please.
Brian? Mr. Jamison? Motion passes 12 yes, 3 no's.
Okay. Also in that meeting, meeting policy regarding use and accounting of donated property by Mayor Frank. Mayor Frank requested approval for development of a policy and reporting accounting system to capture value of non-monetary county donations, space utilities, maintenance, et cetera, to nonprofit organizations. A motion was made by Rick Meredith, seconded by Isabel, to approve the mayor and finance department working to develop a policy and system as described. Motion passed.
Do you need a motion on that?
I don't think so. And there were other two items, where old business vehicle and phone policy, and no action was taken on either one of those also.
Very good.
That's all I have. You have any questions?
Thank you, Robbie. Any questions, Finance Director? Thank you, Robbie. Have a good evening. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, OADA, next, sir, I believe.
Most of you probably remember the Oak Ridge Senior Center at Daniel Arthur Building. We had numerous handicap parking spaces. And when the courts went there, we didn't need those many parking spaces, so we took and made them back into regular parking spaces, except what we legally needed. We had signs left over. The ADA Committee's got those signs in Roger Lloyd's office. We're wanting to hold on to those. There's, we have rules, of course, for surplus equipment. We have a voting precinct at the community center there in Oak Ridge, and they're needing a sign. They have a handicap parking place, but the sign's missing. And so, the ADA Committee was wanting to donate them a sign, one of the signs, but I think we need the commission approval in order to dispose of county-owned equipment, ever surplus equipment. So I was wanting to get this board to approve giving a sign to the community center there, which is the, now in Oak Ridge Museum, but it's our voting precinct for early voting. They're voting there now.
We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith to approve, sir? Have a second by Commissioner Yeager?
Yes.
To approve? We have a question or a comment by Commissioner McCamey?
And I may add that we are also holding those signs for the school department, if they need some.
So you're requesting some signs for that location?
Yeah, if, yeah, they're available, yeah, we have some, they're used. They're not brand new, but, but they will suffice. They're legal.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Creasy.
Thank you.
Uh, next, under departments, is property assessor, Mr. John Alley.
Somebody after you, or was it behind you? Yeah, I'm just looking for, I get, did y'all get a copy of the 2025 reappraisal plan? That's what this is about. You are, I guess, were presented with it for a vote. It's a state TBA requirement that county commission approve a plan five years ahead of time. That gives me the maps to go by, the fieldwork schedule and review schedule, all the mapping and all the laws and guidelines that state wants me to go by, and it has to be approved by county commission.
Page 115 in your iPad, five-year 2025 reappraisal plan, as you mentioned, for Anderson County. Submitted January 25th, 2020. We have a motion, Commissioner Meredith, to approve, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, sir? Any questions? Voice vote, okay, or do you want?
Oh, that's fine.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alley.
Any questions, or anybody need anything?
Doing a good job, Johnny.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good seeing you again.
Thank you.
Next is trustee, birthday girl, Regina Copeland.
Chairman and commission, thank you all for your time. I did want to say something real quick. I wanted to kind of pat Robbie on the back for the great job he's doing. And we work very closely with the finance department, and he's had a lot dropped in his lap, but not only has, is he wearing another hat, but they're also working an employee down, so I commend them for the great job they're doing. The reason I'm here tonight, according to state law, for, as Anderson County trustee, there's a couple of things I have to do in the Department of Delinquent Tax Attorney. And the first being that it's required of me to appoint a delinquent tax attorney with the approval of the county mayor. And for the 218 delinquent taxes, I am appointing attorney Phil Cry. Phil Cry also already does the delinquent taxes for Clinton City. I did get the approval letter from the mayor today approving that. So I just wanted to tell you all that, and then the next thing is that I'm required, concerning that by law, is to meet with the delinquent tax attorney that I appoint and negotiate the compensation which can, which cannot go over 10% of the collected base tax, delinquent tax that they collect. It's not, that 10% is not brought out of the tax dollars, but it is 10% that is added on top of. That is a legal fee that goes to the delinquent tax attorney. That, it looks like, I guess, according by, according to code, that's something that you all have to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Jamison, seconded by Commissioner Meredith to approve as presented, the appointment as requested by the trustee for Phil Cry. Is that correct?
That's correct.
As a delinquent tax attorney?
For 2018.
For 2018, going forward.
Delinquent taxes, yes, going forward.
And that's a reappointment you make every year?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Creasy?
I want to thank you for that responsibility and your selection. Phil Cry's excellent choice, very qualified. You and the mayor have done real well, but I have to oppose it. Regina, I have the highest respect for you, and I know what good a job you're doing. It was a good selection you made, but we have a good tax attorney right here on our payroll already. And I'm gonna vote no. Respect to you, but, much respect to you, but I have to vote no. With, we have one already on the payroll, and I can, I just couldn't find myself, although it's a good choice, but I can't, I can't find myself to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to clarify. You don't actually need us to, to vote to approve your appointment of Phil Cry. You're, you're asking for a vote to approve the, the salary?
The compensation.
The compensation, right?
Yes, that's laid out by the code.
Okay.
The state law.
So that's-
Ten code, but yes.
So that's what the motion is actually on, compensation, okay.
Yes.
Shall not exceed, so it can be a lower number. Right.
Good clarification. That's your motion, and that's the seconders' motion, okay.
Now, repeat the motion for me. Whoever made the motion?
Bob Jamison.
Is it 10%? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, not up to 10%. You want to talk about it a little longer, just about the, we just, just need the clarification on what the pay is? That's what we're voting on.
It is, it is 10% of the money he collects. If he doesn't collect a dime, he doesn't get a dime. It is, pardon me? Yes, yes, and it's the base tax.
And that's what you handed out to us, right?
Yes, it's the base tax. It's 10% that is charted by the clerk and master, and then they are the ones that, that pay it out. But it is 10% that is added on top of the base tax. It doesn't take any money out of the tax amount. It's a 10% on top of that.
Uh, Commissioner Fritz, I'm sorry.
Of course, I'm going to back up with Commissioner Creasy, and, you know, of course, I can't support it, especially since we have a attorney that does this, and when he was doing it, we had a tax sale every single year. And presently, we have not had a tax sale in several years, so I cannot back it. But presently, we give 0%. So when they're saying 10%, I urge our commissioners to stay at the 0% that we presently give. So, uh, I think the, what they normally get is the $150, a title search, and that's it. We don't, we presently, for the past several years, the, the percentage has been 0%. And so, I encourage us to stay at the 0% and not go any higher than that.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz.
Chairman, I would like to say that there is a 10% that's being charged, but our current delinquent tax attorney is an employee. So, the 10%, I mean, it's being charged, but he's an employee, so he's making a salary plus benefits. Phil Cry will not be making a salary plus benefits. He will only be getting what he, 10% of the base tax of what he collects. If he doesn't collect anything, he doesn't get anything.
Thank you. Commissioner Meredith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just think, want a clarification to Commissioner Anderson. I think the discussion is on the bottom part. I don't think we have any say as to who the delinquent tax attorney is. It's obviously by statute between the trustee and the mayor. I think we're voting, or my second was to vote on the 10%, so just point of clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meredith. I appreciate it. Commissioner Mead, sir?
Yes, I have a question. Do we know at this point whether Mr. Cry is going to collect on the order of $160,000 a year, and $150 for every single person that's even a day late on their taxes, as has been done during the current delinquent tax turn?
The way that Phil Cry does it now is, as soon as I turn those over, he will send out summons to how many ever parcels we turn over.
Sure.
He doesn't collect 100, he doesn't do a title review, and he doesn't collect that $150 title review on every parcel. He will send out summons, what comes in and collect, you know, what comes in and pays, then he will get the 10% above and beyond the, the base tax. Then, after, he told me about by the end of the year to the first of the year, the ones that have not come in and paid, he then will look at going to sale. And those are the only ones, then, that would be charged, the $150 title review. And that's the way he currently does it for Clinton City. And that, as I have talked to several trustees across the state of Tennessee, that's- And that, um, as I have talked to several trustees across the state of Tennessee, that's how I'm, that's the way.
That's more reasonable, because my, although I've never had your job, the, it is my experience that when people see their name in the paper for being late on taxes, shortly thereafter, a lot of those people go down and pay their taxes.
Sure.
Now, if they, if they take that maneuver to get behind and be late, they're also hit with this hundred and fifty dollars, even if they were late one day. And so waiting to kind of the end of the year, when you really start to look, there's something really wrong here when people have been in default on their taxes for close to a year. That makes it more reasonable to take a look at their properties who's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Creasy, I'll come back to you next, Joe.
Now, this is a compensation for Phil Cry or your existing tax attorney?
Well, um, I can't do anything about the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. He will no longer, he will no longer be employed with us after March the twenty-seventh. So, so he, uh, whatever is compensated to him would be his, um, you know, his fee that he has charged and the percentage. But he will no longer be, be a county employee with, um, you know, a salary.
And Phil Cry will also be drawing a salary?
On twenty, no, he's not getting a salary. He, he will only get on twenty eighteen, what he collects on twenty eighteen, the ten percent on what he collects for twenty eighteen. Cause it's done every year. That suit is filed every year, and so it's.
And that'll be his only compensation?
Phil Cry?
Yeah.
Yes, with ten percent, and then whatever he does, whatever the courts, uh, and the title examination fees that he does, but he does not do a title examination fee on, uh, every parcel as soon as it's turned over. That is done when it gets ready to go to sale. He will do a, a title review then to see if they have passed away, you know, things like that, and then go forward to the sale. But yes, that is his only compensation. He, he will not be drawing a employee salary.
Or benefits.
Or benefits, right.
Where the present one was.
Yes.
The present.
Yes.
I'm still, I'm still, I, I feel like if our attorney, our law director was doing it, we wouldn't be paying any fees.
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I'm not knocking Jay, but I think Jay's pretty well covered up.
Well, I know he is.
And this is a huge workload to take on, and, you know, I think.
I'm for one to make a motion to hire him some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Uh, Commissioner Fritz.
I'm on the verge of, uh, asking for this, uh, at least the compensation part, uh, for the, for thirty days, and ask Jay to, uh, look into the, the ten percent part, cause, uh, the ten percent is supposed to be going to the general fund, and we've been paying zero percent, uh, to the, uh, delinquent tax, and he only been getting a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, per, uh, title search, and that's it. And I'm not for paying any more money, uh, too, uh, that, uh, I've looked into it, I've made notes on it, and the ten percent is not supposed to be, we've been paying zero percent. Uh, I don't know, that's been even a vote by the full commission to pay zero percent. And we can look in our, uh, notes, uh, that the commission has voted to pay zero percent.
Um, I swear we're gonna talk about this. What it amounts to is, yes, we were taking that ten percent and bringing it into the general fund, but, uh, that ten percent basically equaled what the, the salary and the benefits were to Mr. Tino. Uh, that's what it amounted to. Um, so we're not paying salary and benefits. Uh, is that what I heard? First you said, uh, the ten percent was all he was gonna make, and that was it. Then you said he would make the title search fee, but I think I did hear you say that he's not gonna make a salary and benefits, right? Well, that, we're gonna save that, correct?
Are we talking about Mr. Tino or Cry?
Mr. Cry.
Yeah. Phil is just gonna be the ten percent, and then what he does, um, on title examination fees, that's set by the court, not by me. I don't have a say-so in that part. I just have a say-so in the ten percent.
County commission years ago passed the one fifty, but what I'm saying is, Mr. Cry will not be making a salary, and he will not be drawing benefits off us.
Correct.
So there is a savings there.
Correct.
Unless you replace that position.
I'm not gonna replace that position.
It's a wash, in a sense. Hal, I know you study this, it's pretty much a wash, correct?
Yeah, we've looked at the numbers for this. We've got a lot of requests, and we'll work, part national work.
Hey, Hal, could you come up to the microphone? Thank you, sir.
We'll work with whomever is appointed. We're certainly glad to work with Joe.
Hal Cousins, clerk and master, go ahead, sir. Just want to give you an official introduction.
We've worked with Jay Jaeger, we've worked with Trippetino, and, but when Regina started looking at this, and she's done her homework on this, one of the things that she asked us to do, and actually I had Robbie verify that today, and all I care about, and you've heard me say this before, and I've heard some of you say it, we need a tax sale, okay? And our numbers that Robbie has given me have declined from two thousand seventeen, have collected, uh, just for example, penalty and interest, down from two hundred and eighteen thousand to, um, and to the nineteen and twenty year, we're down to a hundred and four thousand. We're down on our taxes from two hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. We need a tax sale. And, um, without saying anything about who was doing it before, Mr. Tino, or, or Jay, whatever, but, but I do think Mr. Cry is more than qualified. He has the position as, and I know that's not before the county commission, but this, this guy's a practicing attorney. He also, he has a title company, and he's also delinquent tax attorney. He meets all those requirements that she selected, and we back it a hundred percent. We back anybody. Back to the one thing I would say that we were asked to look at, or I was asked to look at, and Regina has pulled statutes on this, and we're just reading from statutes, and I hadn't even looked at it before I was asked to look at this, and I think she had some questions about this is when she came to me a month or two ago. The ten percent, the way the statute reads, and I'm just reading the English language, um, basically shall be devoted, shall be devoted to the expense of prosecuting the lawsuits, that's sixty-seven-five-twenty-four-ten. In that same statute, it goes on to say about the ten percent that it's imposed the, upon the amount due from any defendants to the state, county, municipalities, which penalty shall be devoted to the expense of prosecuting these suits and shall be allowed to the attorney filing the suits as compensation for the, the attorney services. And I believe they have a copy. I think you were running copies of that statute. And then, in that same statute, twenty-four, sixty-seven-five-twenty-four-ten, if you look on down in part D, the title examination fee is actually approved only by the court, and it doesn't attach upon filing of the lawsuit, okay? The ten percent, when we get a thousand of these that come up to our office from hers, the second year of delinquency, that ten percent hits by statute, okay? The title examination fee only attaches upon approval by the court, chancellor. And in the past, what has been, um, asked in, in the court is that it attached to all, a hundred and fifty dollars. The, the court denied that, and the court said, when you do the title searches, you get paid, and that's what Mr. Tino is, is working with. So the difference is that Mr. Cry has indicated, and we've both spoken to him about a great deal with a hundred and fifty, because there were many complaints about this a few years ago in our office. Instead of doing the searches upfront, what he will do is he will take the summons with the addresses that they have, and he'll send summons out for the two thousand eighteenth. And hopefully, a whole bunch of those people just pay. Those people will never see a hundred and fifty dollar fee. It's only when he goes back, and Jay's done this way more than I have, and he starts trying to have to find people and search the records and find who has an interest in the property, only then will the title search fees, uh, start accumulating on these properties. And so, you know, that, if there's, and if you have any other questions about any of this, I'm glad to answer. I mean, we've looked at this pretty hard.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Tino is no longer gonna even be a county employee?
No, not after March the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so all the non-work that he has done for the past two years, or however long he's been there, doing zero, uh, titles, I mean, uh, tax sales and everything like that, has, basically has been for naught.
Now, well, now, now let me speak to that, because it's in our court. Normally, once this stuff gets into the chancery court, as Jay will tell you.
Well, what I'm saying, though, when Jay was doing it, we had a tax sale every single year. And since he took over and it came off his hands, we've had zero tax sales.
I understand that.
And that's where I'm telling, I tell the taxpayers of Anderson County, when Jay was doing it, we had that money coming in every single year.
I understand.
And for the past several years, and this is, uh, this is a very negative towards the trustee's office right now, is that, uh, uh, the money that was helping, uh, fund his, which is to saving the taxpayers' dollars, has now has been zero, because we've had no fund the tax sales, uh, and cause, uh, basically.
There's some people paying, and that, 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 that is coming in.
We're, we're having money. The tax lawsuits, right now in our office, right now in our office, we've got the two thousand fourteen tax lawsuit, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Those are all, Mr. Tino is the attorney of record, okay? And his work, a lot of those, there have been money paid in, there's a lot of fourteen's been paid in. Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, there's still a lot of work to do. I agree with you completely, but that is not wasted. Those lawsuits are still filed, and he will still be the attorney of record, it's my understanding.
Well, I'll, I'll put it this way. I'm gonna start on a monthly basis, every commission meeting, I'm gonna bring up, when are we gonna have a tax sale? And I expect a response. So you go, uh, uh, when are we gonna have a tax sale? When are we gonna have a tax bill? If it means you've been here every meeting, then, uh, uh, you might, you might need to be here every meeting. But I'm gonna ask the taxpayers, that, uh, you know, when are we going to have a tax sale? Cause we have not had one for so many months.
Let me, let me offer this. Ms. Copeland is not the delinquent tax attorney. She do not tell the.
She appoints him though. She is ultimately responsible.
Let me finish, please. She cannot tell him how to practice law. That threat was made once, and it was reviewed. She can select after that. Frankly, her job is done, and then my office works with him. And if you have a question about when the tax sales are, ask your delinquent tax attorney.
Okay.
Cause she can't control that. It's not fair to her.
Quick, quick question, cause I want to just jump in here real quick. Commissioner Fritz, and, and then I'm gonna go to Commissioner Waddell. Trustee, when you took the position over, you, you, you were given the hand dealt to you, I guess?
Yes.
And the delinquent tax attorney was who it was?
Yes.
Uh, you, you agreed to run with that tax attorney for a year to see how things went, I guess. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
You made a decision to do something different, and that's why you're approaching us tonight?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. He was delinquent tax attorney for four years before I got here.
And, and, and the reason you're making a change is because you'd like to see tax sales and the taxes collected?
Cause I think there needs to be a change.
And that's why I said, four years, zero tax sales.
No, I, and Commissioner Fritz, you're absolutely right, but I, I think the trustee is coming to us with a change, to change that. And, and I, I appreciate it. So Commissioner Waddell, Waddell, sorry, sir.
Well, I would like to say, I, I've spoke to several people throughout the county, throughout the courthouse, and they have all, um, stated that Mr. Cry is, is gonna be an excellent, uh, tax attorney. He, he's, he's, he, he's gonna do his good job. Don't have to worry about that. I can't vote for the ten percent, um, only because, Jay, do you do tax sales for other municipalities in our county?
Sure.
If he's good enough to do the tax sales for the municipalities in our county, he's good enough to do our tax sales. He's our attorney. We pay him.
I've done more tax sales than anybody in this county.
That was, that money. But I'll, I'll have one comment, and I'll get out of this, because it's totally out of my control, but go ahead. That money that, uh, is brought in is to fund, was initially to fund his office. Since Mr. Jaeger took over as county attorney, he has not had an assistant attorney in his office. And I, I agree that he's very busy, but up until that point, there were two attorneys in that office. I think that we can hire another attorney to assist with our needs, and we will still save money. If, if we're paying out two hundred and some odd thousand dollars to an outside source, we can definitely hire an attorney for a lot less than that to help our law director and keep that money in house. Also, we can hold Jay Jaeger accountable. When he doesn't, like, like Commissioner Fritz has said, when there's not a tax sale, we can hold him accountable. If, if it passes, I, I think, I think Phil Cry is gonna be an excellent choice if it passes, and, and, and that's the way the, that's the way the county goes. But, but I'm gonna vote no, just, just out of, out of, uh, that I, I'd like to see Jay take it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Sure, and I'm gonna come to Small Ridge next, yes, sir.
I'll say this. Regina is in a very difficult situation, but she has appointed a man that I highly respect. Phil Cry, I've known him for almost twenty years. He's an excellent attorney. He's got integrity, and I'm, I'm, this is nothing about Mr. Tino. Uh, he's got litigation skills. He knows how to file the orders and the motions. Granted, he's done this work. He hasn't done it on the scale I have, but I support her decision. Phil will be an excellent asset to this county. Uh, I don't know when, how he plans on doing this title work, or when he's gonna assess the fee, but I know it'll be fair. I promise you. Uh, and I'm here to help Regina. I just heard today, uh, and I haven't talked to her about this, but I heard today from one of my employees that she's doing the summons as, i- i- it's just, she's doing them right. Don't get me wrong. She's just doing it a very, very, very hard way. I can show her how to fix that, and within thirty minutes, and it'll streamline probably a hundred hours worth of work over there. And, uh, uh, but I applaud her decision, uh, to move forward with Mr. Cry, and I pledge my assistance to her office, and, uh, Mr. Cry, I work with him all the time. He's a, a great attorney. And, uh, if you ever get a chance, uh, or you can just go around and survey the people in Clinton. And, uh, that's used him before. He's extremely fair, and he's really good. Uh, he's a laid-back guy, but he knows how to practice law. But I'll continue to support whatever she needs. If she has a question on delinquent taxes, I'll help her with it. And, uh, I, I've, I've got some other plans, and I've even talked to the mayor and, and Regina about maybe starting some online sales to get in more people involved in these sales and not be in the contentious situation of the, of the face-to-face bidding, and, and we'll set up a presentation for that. But I, I'll pledge my support to her office, and I'll help her anytime she needs.
Thank you, Jay. Hey, Jay, real quickly, before you sit down, uh, uh, and I'm gonna come to Commissioner Small Ridge next, but what, what the trustee is asking us, it, I mean, are we required to approve this?
Yeah, there's a statute, uh, separate from the one that, uh, Hal was reading to you that requires county commission to approve the compensation up to ten percent.
And, and if we don't approve it, what happens?
Uh, you have no compensation agreement. Now, he can file an order with the court to get his title search fees. But again, uh, she's ultimately, um, it's wash, because that, that money that she was paying Mr. Tino in the benefits, which are a lot, is now she's not gonna be using that.
And, and the.
And that ten, so we won't be, that ten percent was going into the general fund, which in a sense was paying that.
And, and, and the pay, he's, he's only gonna get, not to exceed ten percent on the money he collects.
Yes.
I mean, so if we weren't collecting money, to Commissioner Fritz's point, I mean, zero, still zero, no matter what. But if you collect it, then we got money coming in, and he's gonna get ten percent of that. Okay.
I want you to know, the problem we've had for four years is gonna be a legacy issue for many years to come. What Mr. Cry is gonna find out is that when he does take these parcels to sell, the minimum bid is gonna be so high on these parcels, because instead of one year accrued taxes, interest, and penalties, they're gonna have five years accrued taxes, interest, and penalties. That drives up the minimum bid, which makes the property less marketable at the auction, which in turn, what that happens is, the county becomes the default bidder, which all that money is lost from the county when the county pays the compensation. This will be a problem. Mr. Tino is not gonna withdraw from these cases. He'll continue to get his one fifty as they pay, and just be prepared. Don't blame that on Regina. Don't blame that on. And just be prepared, don't blame that on Regina, don't blame that on Mr. Crye. That's gonna be a problem for many years to come.
Thank you. Commissioner Small Ridge, thank you.
Just, uh, going forward, what is the expectation on the frequency of delinquent tax sales? Is that going to pick up and occur more frequently?
Yes, Phil Crye has said that he will, he does it for Clinton City now, and he told me that by the end of the year, the first of the year, once I turn over, I have to turn over by April the first, um, he will immediately get to work on the summons, getting those sent out. That will bring in a lot, right there, just having the summons sent out, letting people know that there's been a lawsuit filed against them for the delinquent taxes. You'll see a lot of money come in there. Then by the end of the year, the first of next year, then he will start looking at preparing for a tax sale.
Right, because I think you indicated, or somebody indicated the receipts, delinquent tax receipts have dropped very significantly.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think right now, the 2014's, I think they're somewhere, um, I think, uh, it, it was somewhere over 700,000 that was turned over in 20, for 2014, and I think that's down to, um, 100, somewhere around 192,000 or 200,000, somewhere right in there. Don't quote me on that, because, you know, but it's somewhere right around in there. So there has been money that's been collected over the years. There may not have been a tax sale, but, you know, there's been still money that's been coming in. But, uh, with the appointment of Phil Crye, uh, we are hoping that that will, um, speed that up, and, you know, we'll get some money, you know, coming in a lot better.
Could I have, Jay?
Joint tax sale, myself and Mr. Crye, in the fall, has worked very well, uh, very easy to work with, and we had it on the same exact side.
Jay, will you come up and get a microphone? I think Commissioner Small Ridge has a question for you as well.
What I was saying is, we held a joint tax sale, uh, myself and, um, Mr. Crye. He did the city of Clinton, and it worked very well one Saturday last fall. And, uh, I'd say that we'll continue to do that, uh, if we don't move to the video auction.
Did I understand you to say that, uh, when you have to sell property, it's based on, or, or you have to sell for at least the amount of accumulated taxes?
Yeah, the delinquent taxes plus the interest and penalty, which is, of course, is gonna compound monthly the interest, and you're gonna have more delinquent taxes each year. So, and if you had, for instance, a, a thousand dollars was, uh, your taxes and interest and penalties on one parcel, if you waited fi- four or five years, five years now to have a tax sale, it's 5,000. That's just an example, which makes that property less marketable, which in turn forces the county to buy that property as the default bidder, but.
And you can waive that, and take a lesser amount, and just say we're gonna.
No, that, that minimum bid, we've gotta make ourselves whole. The clerk and master sets that minimum bid. He's required to, by statute, to make us whole, in a sense. And, uh, he's required to assess these fees, the sheriff's fee, the delinquent attorney, attorney fee, the interest penalties on there, and, um, so, no, that we can't set that any lower. We'd be losing money, uh, on this whole process.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Small Ridge. Commissioner Creasy, come back.
Thank you for letting me. And I want to compliment you, Regina, you've done an excellent job since you've been elected. The people made a good choice. I think that they know that. And you're showing good leadership, because you were, you heard our comments last year, and you apparently saw something that you needed to change, and you've come and changed it. So I'm wanting to compliment you tremendously. You're good leadership. And the other, I do, one question, uh, for the county attorney. The, if she had have selected you, Mr. Jaeger, would you have been able to, um, do that work for her without having to hire more help?
Honestly, Jerry, it's getting to the point. I can't do anything more. I, I, I.
Exactly.
I, I just, I hate, I hate to tell you, I've done without an assistant county attorney for so many years here, trying to save money. It doesn't do anything except hurt me. I'm way behind. I can't devote my time to the matters that really count. And, uh, uh, I, I, I don't know, uh, uh, I've been told that was a silly mistake on my part, thinking I was saving this county money by eliminating that assistant county attorney position in 2006. I should have held on to it, because now, we truly need that person. I can't, I can't force my ladies at work for me to take on any more work. I cannot do it. It, it's, it's not right. And, um, uh, I, I just, to answer your question shortly, I, I couldn't take it on now. I, I just could not. We can't do the work that we've got right now, and do it the way I want to do it. Legal work is not something you take lightly. It's something that's very detail oriented, and, uh, uh, I, i- it's tough the way it is right now.
I was, thank you for your answer, Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina.
Good comments, I agree with you, Commissioner Creasy.
Chairman Waddell, can I say something else?
Yep.
Can I speak?
Well, we got a question on the motion, but Commissioner Mead, he had his hand raised, his button's not working.
Yeah, the, um, last time we, see, first of all, the only thing we're voting on right now is the 10%.
I'm gonna have a second.
The, the selection of who's gonna be the delinquent tax attorney is not in the purview of this commission as much as we may think otherwise. Um, back when we had a delinquent tax attorney that had a salary and full benefits and all that stuff, I was very opposed to the 10%, okay? Uh, however, under this circumstance, uh, I'm, it's, I'm not sure what it's doing right now, it's going in and out. The, um, I'm not that opposed to the 10% when we, when we don't have all the other expense of benefits and salary and all that stuff. Uh, we also don't have the cost to Anderson County citizens that have been delinquent one day on their taxes. Because, you know, if you have a thousand properties on the list, uh, and all of a sudden you charge all of them 150 dollars, that's potentially 150,000 dollars that year the delinquent tax attorney will get. And I've always thought that was absolutely outrageous, when there's really no time allotted for people to pay when they're late. Um, and I think that primarily hits the older people, okay? You know, that, that really can afford at the least. And then for it to be done repetitively, year after year after year, uh, well, it's bad for people to be delayed on their taxes year after year after year, but that is, that extra 150, 150,000, 150,000 dollars each year potentially that goes to tax, delinquent tax attorney, along with salary and other things, uh, I thought was unreasonable. Uh, made our tax attorney by far the best paid employee of the entire county. And I didn't think that really was, was justified. So I'm gonna support the 10%. Uh, because of the no salary, which basically we break even on that, and the fact that we're not having, uh, the citizens of the county pay what I consider to be very unreasonable 150 dollar fees for being delayed on a tax. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. I think we've had plenty of discussion on the item, we need to take action.
Can I say one more thing?
Are you sure you want to say something else?
You know I do.
You might change some minds here, and let's, why don't we vote? I mean, I, I think we've had enough discussion.
The reason why she's gotta speak, because she's forgotten what we was talking about. Everybody's had to testify.
You've heard us talk, I think I, we allow you to talk, go ahead quickly, please.
Well, I was just gonna say, because I will not be, uh, replacing that position in my office, I will be turning back over that 40,000 dollars, uh, back into the budget.
Thank you.
Back into the general fund.
I'm glad I let you talk.
Terrific. You're a good leader.
Okay, uh, again, mayor's in support of this, uh, so I think we have a good conversation, and we all understand. And I'd like to compliment Mr. Jaeger in, uh, you know, to say the first step in, in admitting you have a problem is recognizing you have a problem. So, uh, I appreciate him turning this down, because I, I believe in a cou- three or four years ago, Jay would have just said, yeah, I can do it, you know? And, and that's just the way Jay is, he can do it all.
He's got a grandbaby now, he's gotta spend this extra time with that grandbaby.
I can relate to that, and I'm, I'm glad he said it's not a good time for him. Uh, and, and I do appreciate the discussion. Maybe, uh, we can look at something, uh, assistant down the road, and maybe that makes sense. But on this vote, let's go vote, uh, clear the board, Brian, and yes is to support the trustee's request, no is to, obviously no. Commissioner Jamison?
I voted three times.
It's locked in, sir. We have 13 yes, two no's, and motion passes. Thank you, and appreciate the explanation.
Thank you all.
Okay, next we have, uh, Director of Schools. While the Director of Schools is walking up, I would like to ask this commission to consider all future meetings, to move the Director of Schools up to item five after, uh, public hearings. Uh, it's happening over and over again where the Director of Schools or his representative sits out here to nine or 10 o'clock in the evening, and, you know, I, I would like to see this body move, if it's all right with you, to move the Director of Schools up to under item five. Uh, have him in with the, before the committee reports. Is there any ex, uh, is there a motion to that? Seconded by Commissioner Mead, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. I apologize, Dr. Parrott, go ahead, carry on.
That's, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you, Hal.
I, I, I do enjoy the opportunity to come every month and talk about the great things that are going on in, in Anderson County schools. Just, just a couple of things, uh, was in Nashville with our school board, uh, just got back about 5 o'clock today, and we were down talking with our legislators and talking about all the new laws. And, uh, to say the least, the, there's some laws down there that I've talked with Mr. Waddell about is, is, some of them, uh, as my dad said, they're just crazy, uh, some of the things they want to do. But, uh, we're gonna make sure we fight for what's best for education, and I thank you for all your support for that. Just a few things, I know I've, I've give the report, but I just wanted to make a shout out to, uh, Rachel Madron is the, uh, we have our, we've had our Teacher of the Year, and we get one from Elementary, Middle, and High. And Rachel Madron is from Norris Middle School, she is for the middle school. Uh, Hannah Collins is from Grand Oaks Elementary School, and she is for the elementary. And then Donovan Harrington, he was from Lake, from Anderson County High School. And those were our three, uh, district level Teacher of the Years, and they'll put in for the state winners. And we're excited about that. Just a, a couple of other things, uh, I want to thank the commission and the mayor for, uh, writing the resolution for Dr. Curtis Sexton, for us to name Lake City Middle School GM after him. Uh, it was a great honor to, uh, have him there, and he's done a lot for Anderson County, continues to do a lot for Anderson County. And I really appreciate you all, uh, helping us with that, and I think that was a, an honor well reserved for that, for that man. Uh, the other thing, just to let you know, we're starting on the budget. Uh, we've been crunching numbers and trying to make sure that we do the best we can. Uh, I, I made a joke outside, I, I told the sheriff, I said, told him, I said, "Out, how much are you asking for this year, because I wouldn't ask for less than you do." And, uh, so, I won't tell you, I won't tell you his comment, but, but no, we, we plan to bring you, we may not have a balanced budget the first time, because we don't have all the, the things in to, to know from the state, but we're gonna, we're gonna make sure, uh, for the first time in a long time, thanks to you all, we'll have almost a million dollars in that, uh, capital outlay fund to get a lot of things done next year. We are so excited about that. Uh, one other thing that is really great is, uh, we had our, uh, quarterly meeting with ESG about, oh, about three weeks ago, and we are already ahead of schedule for the savings for this year, and they're really trending in a great, great way. So, uh, those projects, I know they cost a lot of money, and you all are right in the middle one, but they have paid off 10 times over. So, really, that's all I have, uh, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Parrott? Dr. Parrott, I'd just like to say quickly that, uh, Clinton High School put some handrails in for the bleachers, and I, I appreciate that very much. It's, uh, uh, there's been a lot of positive feedback on that for, for even me, who has trouble walking down steps anymore. So I appreciate that.
We had bought them, and there was, there was, the people were supposed to come and put them in. We had a, about three years ago, we put them everywhere, and we couldn't figure out where they were, and we found there was a, there was a storage place we didn't know about, so we got them on. And, and, and anytime, y'all know, I really appreciate you all, y'all have my cell phone number. If anything that's going on, that you need some help on, a lot of times, it's just a phone call away and say, "Hey, what's going on with that?", and everything's out.
How are we looking out there at Claxton? I know the, the T-Dot or, has put a, is that Turning Lane?
They're, they're, they're working on that, they're, the, now, the last, and I don't know, the, the last time, they still had a holdout with the, the person on the corner there, so I don't know if.
Across the street?
Yeah, and I don't know if that's holding everything up, or how that, how, how that's working. But, listen, just getting the, the trees and everything down made it a whole lot nicer over there.
Yes. Thank you again, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you, thank you all.
Yes, sir. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to brag on Dr. Parrott just for a minute. Uh, had a gentleman down at our church, uh, his brother, uh, passed away, and his daughter moved from Georgia up to, uh, the Cove in Oliver Springs, and came to Clinton High School to register, to transfer from Georgia up here to go to school, high school, and ran into some difficulties at the high school, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't register her to, to attend school. So I came up to Dr. Parrott's, uh, office on behalf of, uh, this gentleman down at the church, and told Dr. Parrott the situation, and he said, "I'll look into it." So I didn't call him the next day, but I called the gentleman that, uh, his granddaughter was, or niece, I guess it was, uh, to ask him if the school had contacted him about his daughter or his niece going to school. And he said, "Yeah, she's, uh, in school this morning." So, that, to me, is good leadership. Just get, just taking hold of something and getting it done. I think it's what, uh, a good leader does, is just make it happen. And my hat's off to you, sir.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, and thank you, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Parrott? You'll be early next time, sir.
Have a good afternoon.
See you, buddy, thank you.
I'll still be here for Bud.
Were you afraid we were gonna cut something out or something? Don't you trust us?
Just if you have questions.
Thank you, buddy, have a good evening.
Wait, Dr. Parrott, I'd like to request a substitute motion that I can be before.
Right after, right before.
Uh, we're, we're putting procurement, or purchasing and, uh, finance back down.
It's my duty to stay, to stay to the end. Um, on the, on, uh, the mayor's report, you approved at the finance level of the authorization, uh, for 250,000 dollars, uh, for the senior center borrowing. And then I have on my agenda the, if, the official legal documents that would be necessary to carry that out. Um, as I did share with members of the operations committee, and I, I did, uh, and Scott Gibson is here, he can answer any questions, um, that you have on this. But I did talk to him about holding this out until the legislature, um, if, if we could do that, um, until they let us know if they have obtained funding for us, whether it's a grant or, um, through the appropriation or amendment process. And he did say that we were four weeks out. If you want to speak to that, Scott, feel free.
Yes, uh, I did.
Scott, state your name and who you're with, please.
Scott Gibson, with, uh, Commonwealth Securities, County's Financial Advisor. Um, the resolutions, you have your resolutions in front of you, and the plan is, if you adopt those tonight, we will continue to move forward, but, uh, it, we are, we are going to combine this financing, if we need to, with the ESG project that the county has approved already, and the refundings that y'all have approved. And so we will lump this in to minimize the cost of doing this extra 250,000 dollars. The cost will be negligible, almost $1,000 to do the, do the transaction, since we're already doing a bigger transaction. And, um, we will, um, it will take us approximately four weeks from today before we were even ready to move forward with that sale, by the time we do the rating, get everything in place. And so I told the mayor that, uh, we will circle back up before we have the sale and get a better idea what the legislature is doing, and if we are ready to move forward, and we have an idea, we can move forward. If we need to wait a couple of weeks after that, we can also continue to wait. So I think we're in a good position, and we will accommodate the county, uh, as, as best we can. I, I cannot promise that the legislature goes into July or August, which I don't think will happen, that we'll still be holding out, but, uh, you know, in a reasonable amount of time. Yeah, it is an election year, so I, I, I think they'll probably try to get done early, and we should be able to, you know, have a much better idea here in about a month.
Thank you, Scott.
Uh, so I'm requesting two, just for the minutes, two separate motions. So the first would be motion to approve 2002-807.
I have a motion, Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner McCamie, do you have a question on this motion?
Yeah, while we're doing, I, you might have answered that by saying that you were combining it with the ESG, but I was wondering why we were doing general obligation bonds when normally. with the ESG, but I was wondering why we were doing general obligation bonds when normally that amount would be just a capital outlay note.
Since we are combining it with the ESG project, we will just add it in. That'll minimize your costs even lower than a capital outlay note. That'll give us the best rate if we have to use the financing. I really think the, if we use a bond issue, you know, we're probably looking at rates of 150 or less on a 10-year amortization for this deal, so, you know, and the cost of issuance, like I say, will be minimum. And so this will be the best way to go forward with the transaction.
Okay, that was my question.
And I, and I promised the mayor that I would actually break out an amortization schedule, so if y'all want to, you can keep track of it. Out of that big bond issue, I will break out internally for you an amortization schedule. We are planning on amortizing this over a 10-year period, and for the General Debt Service Fund, and like I said, we will have a separate amortization. It will be one bond issue, but internally for Robbie or the mayor, we can track to the penny exactly how much is for the senior building, how much is for the refunding, how much is the ESG project and all that.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
And we did, we did on Friday, I think your coupon was even a little bit lower, so we were looking at 28,000 plus. You know, you're now looking at 26,000 plus on interest, so it's dropped down a little bit on his estimates. Was that Friday or Thursday you were doing that spot check, so?
And that rate actually still might be on the high side.
Okay, any other questions? Have a motion, have a second. Do we need to do this on the board, or?
Yes, yeah.
Let's go to the board. Creasy stepped out, yeah.
He's absent.
Yeah, we'll just, yeah, just mark him as absent for now. This will still require, how many?
Nine.
Okay. Thirteen yes, one no, motion passes.
And the next is, I'm requesting approval for Resolution 2002-808.
What's the total amount of those general obligation bonds?
For all the projects we've been discussing, or just for the 250 for the senior building?
What is the Resolution 20-02-800, or excuse me, 808?
It's 250,000.
250,000 for that one?
That's for, just for senior building allocation, allocation.
That's 808?
Yes.
Yes.
What was 807?
That was the initial resolution. You need two resolutions to do what we're doing for the same project.
The first one says authorizing issuance not to exceed 250,000.
Yes, that's opening up the protest period, so you have to do a public, public notice in essence, so you have to have two separate resolutions.
Any other questions? Commission? Let's go to the board. I think you just hit the wrong button. Explorer has voted. Would you like to tally the results? Yes, we would like to tally the results.
I gave Meredith my props.
What's that?
That's an expression, I can't remember.
Well, we don't know what Meredith is, do we? I guess we can see a little.
I guess we was going too fast. Mayor, do you have any other items that you want to discuss while this vote's taking place?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you have any other items you want to discuss?
Yes, we added to the agenda the Glen Alpine site. So I spoke with Catherine outside about this as well. The county in the city of Clinton entered into an agreement back in 2012 that once Glen Alpine was moved to a new location, whatever that location would be, that the county agreed to sell the existing property, and that's for Clinton and retail development and all of that. And so even though that is an agreement, I would like an official motion to declare that property surplus so that we could, there's never any questions asked from a procedural standpoint, even though we do have an agreement between the city of Clinton County.
Real quickly to interrupt, breaking news. Twelve yes, one no on the last vote for Resolution Number 20-02-808. So that motion passes, 12-1. Are you okay with that? Commissioner Creasy, we marked you absent.
Absolutely, I would have been a no.
That's, that's what somebody mentioned to me.
Absolutely. Absentism.
Okay, that motion passes. Continue on, Mayor.
So anyhow, I'm just asking for a motion to-
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, to move forward with the motion that the mayor has presented on Glen Alpine. Commissioner McCamey, you did not have a question, or did you, sir?
Yes, I do. Would you also entertain with that motion to go ahead and auction the property and set a date?
Well, actually, the agreement specifies that we will try to have that within 90 days or as long as we're working towards that. I was going to bring that up next, just to get your input. We're looking at April 11th, and then it's back up April 4th or 18th, and I was going to see if anyone on commission had any input there. I like the 11th or the 18th, just to give it a little more time for advertising standpoint perspective, but the agreement pretty much governs that, Commissioner McCamey. I mean, we got to get our, we got to get on the ball.
But we need to decide whether it should be a public auction or single bid, and I oppose any single bids. I think it needs to be a public auction for that piece of property.
We're doing a public auction, yes.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you. Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, just wondering, what size property are we talking about?
I think it's just, and I can't believe I've forgotten this. I think it's just an acre.
It's not that big.
It's one acre.
Shy of an acre, that's what it was.
One acre, exactly.
Yes.
It's directly from the old convenience center across from Anderson County High School. Yeah, just, that's what it looks, that's all you see now it's going to be.
Thanks to the sheriff and planning, we've gotten, it pretty much cleaned up. We would like to trim it up a little bit more, but-
And we also got T-DAC to say that there are no environmental problems there, so.
It's a, it's a critical piece if someone wants to develop along that corridor, because you have to have some type of drainage or retention pond or something.
Did that answer your questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, and a note for the planning commission or the law director. I remember looking up that property some years ago and the deeds and so forth, and if I remember correctly, that was part of the property of the vocational school. It was all one partial. And we need to have that subdivided before we sell, if I'm not-
Oh, we got it in a separate map and parcel, I believe. It was originally part of the Weber property, but I believe we put it in a separate map and parcel. I'll check that there.
Can you check to make sure that it has a separate map and parcel?
Yes, sir.
We don't want to sell it at a low price and sell our vocational school.
It was annexed by the city.
Dr. Parrott left too early, see?
It had to be separate because it was annexed by the city, but the school wasn't annexed by the city.
That don't mean they didn't make a mistake, though.
Well, that's true, but, um-
I'll check that there.
Please do. And I'll double check.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other questions on the motion? Voice vote, okay, would you?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no. Thank you.
And any input on the date, or would you just prefer I pick the latest date, or latest?
What's that? Latest, I agree with-
April 18th. All right. And then, if you don't mind, I just real quickly want to bring you all up to speed on something. RJ Corman has filed with the Service Transportation Board to abandon the rail line, and this goes from Oneida through Scott County, through Campbell County, through, and ends in Anderson County. And there has been a lot of activity about what to do with that line. I know New River Railway has looked at it, but we also have some outside interest in coming in and looking at that for a premier location. They're not ready to share their name, and they didn't want me to announce anything yet, but they do want to come on site and take a look at the rail line, and if that happens, that would be a great win for, for Anderson County. So I'll continue to keep you apprised of that. I think they're going to try to have a team boots on the ground in the middle of March to take a look and see, because it's, it's an expensive process, so apparently, once this has been filed with the Service Transportation Board, if you want to look at a business plan and look at that line, then I think there's a, I can't remember, I didn't bring my notes on it, but it's like a 30 or $35,000 fee to basically, I guess, go through the process where you could look at taking over the line. Then they would purchase it for the appraised value of the current track. So I will keep you apprised of that as it goes.
I can see it now, Rocky Top Express, orange.
Yes, yeah.
You guys drawing for that already?
I figured you might. All right, anything else, Mayor?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much for your-
Well, I do have one more thing.
Sure.
Thank you, commission, for finding a home for the seniors. And, you know, I haven't wanted to get up here and be melodramatic about, and I know it's not a done deal, because we got 30 days, and we got to make sure everything is up to standard there on those final details, but just some, sometimes the conditions they are in there, I haven't wanted to share a lot of that, just from a liability standpoint, but what you all did tonight is just a huge deal, and I thank you personally from the bottom of my heart. I know they do, and I'm sure you're going to get some kind of special meal that they'll cook with donated food. But anyhow, thank you, thank you, thank you, to all of you. Even those that voted no, I mean, seriously, it, you all are still a body, even those that vote no.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate that, and appreciate all you've done.
You did your homework.
Yep. Okay, Law Director, sir.
Sir, I just want to make sure we can cover it all, these, myself and Kim back there with the minutes. We've got the resolution to amend the TIP policies, correct? That's been done. Resolution requesting changes to the Jackson law, has that been passed?
No.
Okay, we need to vote on that. You have the copy of that.
Do we have a motion by anyone to pass the resolution on the Jackson law? We have a motion and a second. Actually, that came out of operations, did we?
No.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Jamison. Any questions on the resolution for the Jackson law requested changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Denenberg has gone ahead and written the cover letter, so when we get that signed, we'll ship it right out. It's ready to go. We've taken care of the freedoms of the U.S. Constitution, that's Commissioner Creasy. The vehicle lease, we got that, Tim Wright in operations for Andersonville. The resolution authorizing the carrying of firearms by employees, that's yet to be decided tonight. However, there is a security meeting tomorrow at noon. They have requested to take a look at that. I've notified Commissioner Mead. I hope he's there to explain it to them. I didn't know if you want to take this up tonight, or if you want to defer to their review tomorrow.
Commissioner Mead, would you be okay?
I'm perfectly willing to go to their committee and answer any questions they have, but I've already talked with Judge Elitch, I've already talked with the sheriff, I mean, I've already talked to all these people that are in favor of the resolution. And so I like to go, I like to go ahead and-
I would prefer to wait on-
And I know Mr. Creasy's going to vote no, he's, but that's fine.
Let me, let me just jump in real quick. I think Commissioner McCamey has a motion.
Yeah, my motion was going to be refer it to the Security Committee and get some questions. I've got some questions about different departments. I mean, if, if the elected county clerk says he doesn't want his people to carry-
We talked about that in HR.
Does he have that authority, or is this authority with the people at the senior center, if the mayor says she doesn't want them to carry, is that her prerogative, or are we?
Oh, it's certainly their prerogative. I'd be a direct order from a supervisor.
They can post under 1359.
So we have, we have a motion to defer to the Security-
Security Committee.
And we have a second by Commissioner Denenberg. Is there any discussion on that motion? To refer it to the Security Commission meeting tomorrow?
My only discussion is this is, this was forwarded specifically by the full commission, the Legislative Committee, to come back, which is a major committee of eight members. Okay, now, they don't always, they don't always appear, okay? This has been to operations three times, it's been to full commission, now this is the second time. It's been to Legislative Committee three times, it's been to HR Committee. The sheriff has personally told me that he's in favor of going ahead with this resolution because it improves security in the, in the few buildings that it affects. It's been checked with the Law Director, it's been checked with C-TAS Legal, and they're, everything seems to be okay. We're on track.
Excellent.
We've all, we've all had, made our oaths to the Constitution, the laws of the state of Tennessee, and that's all we're trying to do, is comply with the laws of the state of Tennessee and make the courthouse a safer place. But if you, if you, if you vote for it to go to the, to the Security Committee, I can certainly go and answer their questions, just like I did every place else.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Yeager?
I just sent a text to the sheriff in case he's still out there. I'd like to hear from him personally. I don't, I don't doubt Mr. Mead, but I'd like to hear him speak on this.
I would, I would, if I knew he was out there, I would have invited him in myself.
He has been, I don't know if he still is.
Yeah.
But we have a motion on the floor to forward it to Security. I think the sheriff's a part of that committee. We have a second on that motion. Any other discussions on that motion? All in favor of forwarding as presented to the Security Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
One no. Thank you.
I hate to ask you all to do this tonight, but we're going to need a short executive session. Our mediation team went to mediation on Monday. The county mayor was with us, commission chair, Wondell was with us, the sheriff, and we've got a negotiated settlement. We need just a few minutes of your time tonight. We've only got till March 1 to put this in, in place, and, but I would appreciate it if we can, if you add it as new business, and I promise I won't take up much of your time, but I want you to understand what's going on. And do you need to vote on that, sir?
That's a good question. I think we would need a motion added to the agenda.
You're adding it to your agenda.
Is there a motion to add?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Creasy to add it, executive session under new business, sir?
Yes, sir.
And seconded by who? I'm sorry?
Denenberg.
Commissioner Denenberg. Did you get that, guys back here? Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Last thing I've got is a comment for Commissioner White. You mentioned the funeral for Deputy Ryan and the honor guard. Two very sharp individuals with our sheriff's office facing the casket. The gentleman to the right is Deputy Carr. He is in charge of our Explorer post. He is also a school resource officer at Clint River Community School, which you know is very challenging in itself, and he is an excellent deputy. We're glad to have him back from Highway Patrol. He spent 10 years with the Highway Patrol on the governor's personal detail at times, and so you're right, Commissioner White, he's very sharp, and if anybody's thinking about putting their kids in the Explorer post, you can rest assured, they're well taken care of by Deputy Carr. We talking, we call him Commander Carr, but he's an excellent deputy, and we're glad to have him back. That's all I have for you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Jay, appreciate it. Sheriff, would you like to come up? Commissioner Yeager had a question on, we referred by it to Security Committee tomorrow, but-
It's the employees carrying in the courthouse and probably Jolly, I guess.
Yeah, it'd be the Jolly Building and Division Two in Oak Ridge.
What's your, what's your comment on that? What's your, what's your comment on that?
So I reviewed the resolution, took a look at it. And here is where I'm coming from. I'm, I'm very pro-Second Amendment. And I do not believe our courthouse is secure, particularly the main location. I have been a proponent of one exit, one entrance since day one. It has, it hasn't seemed to really get any legs. And it's nobody's fault, other than we just had a lot going on.
New sheriff in town.
Yeah. So I, I don't want to make, I don't want anybody to, who can legally carry guns, I'm not interested in infringing on their rights. I will tell you this, I am for the resolution in the sense that it is something we should absolutely consider. But there are other, other things that come into play. It's not as simple as just this body saying, okay, employees can now carry guns, okay? It's, it's, there's other things that have to come into place. And I'm sure it's the same things that some of you have called and talked to me about. Concerns with innocents being shot in an active shooting situation, or something like that. So there has to be protocols and things in place that county employees understand what to do in a given situation. One of the, one of the other things that is a little bit concerning for me about it is, is that, you know, not everyone fully realizes or understands their own abilities. And what I mean by that is, I have a sister, the last thing in the world you want is her to have a loaded pistol in her hand, right? I mean, this is just the facts. So somehow, we have to find a way to ensure that we have, if we go this route. I definitely tell you this, I think it is a game changer, as far as from a safety standpoint. But we have to find a way to make sure that the ones who are participating can do what we're asking of them. In that sense. And the ones who don't want to, I'm good with that, too. But we have to make sure that they know when they're in an active shooting, at some point, they need, and law enforcement's in the building, they need to let law enforcement do it. So I know that kinda sounds like I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth, but it's factual, okay? The, I really believe if, you know, if everybody had a gun on their hip, I promise you, we'd all be a lot nicer to one another. That's a fact. If you knew everybody was armed when you were talking to them. Because, because someone will risk saying something and take a punch in the face. But they may not, if they know you got a gun. So I, I think Mr. Mead's resolution is, is definitely a path. And of course, it's a lot, costs a lot less than one exit, one entrance. But as a body, you, you have to make the decision on what that looks like. Just simply saying everybody can carry doesn't, doesn't take care of it. So there's a lot of planning work that has to go into it, in my opinion.
Thank you, Sheriff. I, I'm hopeful that the Security Committee will make a recommendation, have one point of entrance, and propose that, and make it come through the H.R. Office. I've heard some discussion of that, but obviously, we're not gonna finish all that tonight. But I, I'm more in favor of one point entrance and taking care of that business, because I, you know, that's just my, my two cents. Go ahead.
Just to add, just a couple of quick things also, that I think are very valid. So the, Mr. Mead's done an excellent job in ensuring that it follows statute and state law. I mean, it is spot on. I have one little issue with it. We sat down, talked about it, and I, and I now agree with him, that he, it's a hundred percent right, plus he spoke to Mr. Austin at C.T.A.S. So from that, from that position, we're solid. The only, the only other thing that, that I would add to that is we have to make sure that we, we are fully in control with it. And what I mean by that is, currently under, the way we're set up here, it would basically mean, once you come up on the third floor, is when that, when they couldn't, when they could no longer carry those guns. As Mr. Mead and I spoke about, you could move that boundary out, all the way to the front door. And then a gun wouldn't be allowed in the courthouse. So in essence, this is kind of a pathway, maybe, to get to that, or we decide that works for us.
We look forward to the Security Committee's suggestion and recommendation.
I knew it, I saw y'all there.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, next is the Intergovernmental Committee report by Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quite frankly...
Great report, Commissioner Denenberg, I appreciate it.
Watch it. I'm getting tired and cranky. Looking for the, the only thing we really had was the amendment, excuse me, to the Jackson law that Commissioner Isbell had not already addressed. We've taken care of this. We've talked about the TIF issue. So really, I think that what was covered under the Intergovernmental Committee has already been discussed ad nauseam, so I think we can move along, if you don't mind, please.
And also the point to bring TIFs to Intergovernmental...
Well, that's why I said the TIF issue.
Yes, ma'am, you got it. Legislative Committee report, Chairman Mead, thank you, Commissioner Denenberg.
Anything I was gonna talk about, it's already been deferred.
Thank you. Great report, Commissioner Mead.
How's that for a brief report?
That's, that's a...
I'm gonna get my red pen out and mark this.
I owe you lunch. Okay, next is old business. Any old business? Oh, Commissioner Merritt?
No, mine's under due.
Okay. Old business, I have one question, Commissioner McCamey. We had some discussion, or I thought I had heard discussion in the past, about some of the funds going into the solid waste for East Wolf Valley Convenience Center, getting a new location, from the sale of the property of Oliver Springs. Can you give us an update on that?
I think I made that motion, but I think it was defeated, wasn't it?
I don't remember it being defeated.
The ninety thousand that we got from the sale of Tupper Town Community Center?
I don't, I think that was defeated.
I made a motion to grant ten thousand to the city of Oliver Springs for their park and the remainder to be placed in the...
Solid Waste Committee.
Solid Waste, or, or to be earmarked for solid waste for purchase of property for East Wolf Valley.
That's a, I'd like to research that. We can't do it right now, but I'd like to research that more, because I, I was under the impression we approved setting those funds into the Solid Waste Department and that we're gonna use those funds to look at a new location. I thought we're looking at that old gas facility there, Commissioner Fritz down.
They've taken off the table, they don't wanna sell it.
So I, I know that we're having a lot of issues, Mayor, in Claxton. When folks go, and I know it's everywhere, but Claxton, Saturdays, we're having issues with one dumpster. It's full, and then we gotta wait, and the people are lined up. And I'm getting a lot of complaints on that. And I'd really appreciate if you could get Jeff or...
Sure. We're actually, Mr. Chairman, we're actively working on property. In fact, Billy Brown in Johnny Alley's office has been doing some G.I.S. work. And we did identify one parcel, but I gave that to an engineer. I think it's gonna be a little too thin, but it would've been perfect. It was right along the rail, rail line, and there's already a road bed there. But we are, I mean, we know it's an issue, it's filling up, and there's just no more room to put another, so...
Is there, is there any way we can get more trucks delivered or working on Saturdays than just the way it's working now?
The, the trucks do not run on Saturday. They, they don't run their trucks on Saturdays. What they try to do is on Friday is to empty the containers. And if one's half-full, then they have one and a half to go, you know, for Saturday, until they can be there Monday. One of the problems we're having right now is the increase because of the old Glen Alpine. People are not wanting to go to the new Glen Alpine, so they just wait on the way to Knoxville and, well, in East Wolf Valley. Our tonnage has really increased over there, and our footprint has not increased.
I appreciate it.
To handle it. But we are looking at some additional properties. And it's, it's number one on our list to look at. And I'll be talking with you and Commissioner Fritz about a certain area that I'm looking at right now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I know that, I guess, maybe a year or so ago, we talked about doing some public meetings. And I'm still game for that, if, if you and Commissioner Fritz wanna do something in your district, because maybe people don't want it where it is. Maybe you'd like to go a little more into the heart of Claxton.
I mean, I can't speak for everybody. I don't think people have an issue where it's at. They just would like it to be bigger and be able to get in off the main road on Clinton Highway there, to be safer. You know, I've not really had anybody say they just don't like where it's at, they just wanna be able to...
Biggest issue is, you know, just, it's so congested, you know? And it takes so long to get in and out. I mean, you'll have people unsafely parking all up Clinton Highway, just trying to get on in there. And then because of that, we had a, like, one resident talk to you, and then Commissioner Val, or... Because he'd already talked to me earlier about the, and I've already had several calls about illegal dumping along the roads out there in Claxton. We're seeing all kinds of stuff, there's people getting, I reckon, getting tired of going on there and can't get in, or backed up, or whatever. And they're throwing stuff everywhere along the roads now, just constantly, you know, uh... No one's looking, throw it out, and they're still trying to go in there and go through those long lines and are backed up with stuff. So, I mean, it's starting to be an issue.
Yes, it is. Alright. Any other items? Thank you for the update, thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Any other old business? Commissioner Isbell, did you have old business or new business?
No, I just wanted to come in on this issue about the solid waste.
Yes, sir.
We have same issues in District Four. I get phone calls about, you know, they're full by ten o'clock in the morning. One thing that can, in this summer, I talked to the mayor about is the pressure rating is still down. I can explain that later. But the one thing, and I've been in the recycling business for years, I've been in the recycling business for years, and when the economy goes up, you create more material, so...
True. Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. Commissioner Merritt, if you're still on new business? Just real quick. You, you wanna talk about your new business before we go into executive session? Nothing else on old business, new business? Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Chairman Mead to call a Rules Committee meeting. I'd just like to review some of our committee rules, as well as the commission rules. I have a few ideas, not for the full commission, but to bring it to the committee. So I'd like to ask the chair to do that, and I so moved.
Second.
Have a motion to have a Rules Committee, seconded by Commissioner Val. Any discussion on that?
Other than you will give me some idea of what I, what is... If I got a chair of the big, I like to have some idea.
He's a boy, he ready, he's mine.
I'll look favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Val, did you have something?
No, sir, I had your own.
Okay. We're gonna take an executive session, means everybody has to leave. You can certainly sit outside and come back in if you like, and then we'll pick up our business after that.
Cameras do have to be off.
Cameras will be off, microphones will be off. Thank you all for coming.
I didn't know we were floating balloons. I didn't know we were voting for the Canadian, I apologize. I've done this at seven o'clock. I'm just, you know, more of an car.
Sure.
The land, the real estate that these collection sites are owned, they're owned by the county or by a policeman in Marin County.
The one in Claxton, we lease.
We lease.
From, from a individual. Thank you. Okay, we're back in, back in session, back under new business. Any other new business items?
One thing, real quick.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Ag Committee met today, and we are short a county commissioner. Commissioner Merritt's term, his last term expired in December. So I don't know if the mayor or the chairman appoints someone, but we do need a, another commissioner on the Ag Committee.
If there's any commissioners that are interested in the Ag Committee, please contact Vice Chairman Anderson immediately. Ag.
Agricultural Committee.
Okay.
Meeting noon on the same day the county commission...
Do they cell phone? Okay.
Okay. Any other new business?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the settlement recommendation by, as ordered by the mediation team and the court. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no noted. Commissioner Isbell. Okay, no other new business, no business, no business for us. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.